This is a call to order of the June 3, 2020, regular meeting of the Duck Town Council. I'd like to thank all of you out there that have joined us remotely. To ensure an orderly meeting, please follow the guidelines for interaction this evening. Public comments. If you submitted your comment via email, it will be read into the record. If you need to submit a comment, please use the Q and A function in Zoom to submit your comment. Please include your name and address and limit it to three minutes when read aloud. During public hearings, please use the Q and A function to make comments during the public hearings. They will be read into the record. Once the council has entered into discussion on other items, we will not allow comments to be read during the discussion. Any comments submitted during discussions will be read into the record in the second public comment session near the end of the agenda. At this time, I'd like to do a quick roll call. I am Mayor Don Kingston.
Councilmember Nancy Kavaness.
Councilmember Sandy Whitman.
Mayor Pro Tem Monica Thibodeau.
Councilmember Rob Mooney.
Chris?
Chris Layton, town manager.
Robert?
Robert Hobbs, town attorney.
Robert Hobbs, town attorney. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Nancy Kavaness, she'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Please join me for a moment of silence. I'm going to start with item number two, public comments. This evening, the public comments will be read into the record by the Assistant Town Manager, Allison Flynn. Allison?
The first comment is from June 2. Subject is Town of Duck capital budget hazardous conditions on walking paths in Sanderling along Route 12. Dear Town of Duck Council members, please accept this request to accelerate the timing of planned repairs to the multi-use trail along Route 12 in the Sanderling communities. The trail asphalt surface has badly deteriorated over the past several years and now presents a clear safety hazard to walkers, runners, and bikers. Please see photographs included with my message to Ms. Sandy Cross copied below. I urge the town to take action to repair the trail as soon as possible to mitigate the danger to trail users. Ms. Cross has shared with me the proposed timing of repairs. See message below. But this schedule does not address in a timely fashion what I believe is both a serious safety risk and liability risk to Town of Duck residents. I recommend the Town Council reprioritize capital funds to address this safety hazard as soon as possible. Thank you very much. Daniel Werner, 121 Oystercatcher Lane. Second one is from June 2 as well. Subject, Sanderling bike trails improvements. Dear Town Council, I'm writing to express the ongoing concern our HOA Association has regarding the condition of the bike hike trail running from Oystercatcher Lane north. As President of the Sanderling Homes Association, I've received at least 10 complaints since the beginning of 2020 from residents regarding the condition of the public walkway. I've personally experienced hikers and more so bikers veering off the walkway and into the grassy area that abuts Duck Road. Some bikers have even veered onto the roadway. Last week, I saw several young children do this and had a car been traveling north along Highway 12, there could have been a true tragedy occur. This area is in need of repair or if not repaired then cordoned off and not used until repairs happen. I'm aware that several members of our community have expressed their concerns directly to Sandy Cross or to Chris Layton. Earlier this year, I chimed in with a follow on email to Chris as I was copied on a community residence correspondence concerning the subject. Chris's response was timely and the timeline for repairs was similar to what is now posted on the Town of Duck website. In conclusion, I'd like to suggest that flooding may be a bit less of a concern than root intrusion and actual path erosion. Roots and asphalt protrusions are a definite tripping hazards for joggers and walkers and certainly at dawn, dusk, and late evenings are less visible to maneuver around. Root and asphalt protrusions cause a washboard ripple for bikers. That's a definite riding hazard. Thank you for your concern and hopefully as a town, we can see our way through making these needed repairs sooner rather than later. The longer they exist, the more people are exposed to this public hazard. Sincerely, Mark Stamer, President, Sanderling Homes Association. Third comment, also from June 2. Subject, questions on budget proposal for tonight's meeting. Questions for the Town Council on budget proposal. One, after the homeowners made five years of payments, special obligation bond, I thought the project was paid for. You say there are two more years of actual debt payments on the project. According to the preliminary budget, the money is coming from the Capital Reserve/Beach Fund? Why was it done this way? Two, what is the expected maintenance that Duck needs to do for the beach renourishment? Starting in 2021, will this cost be continual? Is there an expected to be another dredging and beach fill in 2022? How has the beach fared since this project? Three, the MSDA and MSDB rates are slightly lower for the new assessment, but with the new property assessments, won't the amount be close to the same as before? Four, how many years are left on the town hall and land debt? Five, what exactly is dune planting/fencing/fertilization? In parentheses, 151,000? The dune has grown extensively in the last two years. Is this much necessary to maintain it and is this money coming from the MSDA and MSDB assessments? Tom and Carolyn Shaner, 114 Carroll Drive. The next public comment is from June 3. Subject is request for update on Dare County EMS ambulance in Duck. I'm writing on behalf of the Board of Directors of Sanderling Property Owners Association, SPOA. Our association is comprised of more than 180 members/homeowners in the northern section of the Sanderling community. Patty Bosert, who is a Sanderling resident in the Southern Association of our community, forwarded this email to make us aware of the effort to get a Dare County EMS ambulance stationed with the Duck Fire/Policeman's Department in the Public Safety Building. SPOA is farther from the southern shore stationed EMS ambulance than almost every other group of homeowners in Duck. Only Sanderling Resort, Salt Houses HOA, and Palmer's Island Club HOA are farther. In fact, our Sanderling Racket and Swim Club is north of the resort. Our Board of Directors is diverse enough that I can confidently say that the directors' unanimous support of this proposal represents our full membership. Please register Sanderling Property Owners Association, its Board of Directors, and its members as strong supporters of this proposal, initially as a pilot program, but with the expectation of it growing into a long-term positioning of emergency services. Regards, John Park, SPOA Board President. The next comment is also from June 3. Subject is in supports of a pilot program housing a Dare County ambulance in the Duck Public Safety Building. Councilmembers, this past fall, I became aware the Dare County EMS chief had offered to station a Dare County ambulance at our Public Safety Building approximately four years ago. The offer was rejected by the Fire Department citing lack of space at the Public Safety Building. I have reviewed blueprints for the proposed new $6 million public safety building and they showed only four vehicle bays to be constructed with provisions for a fifth bay if needed. Our current Public Safety Building has five vehicle bays. Therefore, I challenge the excuse that there is no room at our current Public Safety Building to house an ambulance, notably during our busy tourist season when our population increases to almost 25,000, especially when 50% of 911 calls in Duck are medical and a majority of our year-round population are senior citizens. Room can and should be made to accommodate an ambulance and crew in our Public Safety Building now. Having an ambulance here in Duck will save lives. Councilmembers, you need to take action to make this happen. Thank you. Patty Bosert. And the final comment is also from June 3. Subject is request for three firefighters in FT 2021 budget. And it's from the Duck Volunteer Fire Department Board of Directors. While fully understanding the financial and budgetary constraints imposed by the COVID-19 pandemic, the Duck Fire Department Board of Directors strongly endorses Chief Donna Black's request for three additional full-time firefighters/EMTs. With the changing demographics of our combination department, these positions give us the ability to maintain a minimum of three firefighters for immediate response to all calls for service. Approving these positions will ensure that the Duck Fire Department will be able to continue to provide the highest level of service to our community. Pat Scarlett, Bob Mack, Rick Fagerston, Boyd Brannon, and Kent Zimmerman. And that's all.
Thank you, Allison. Thanks to those that in fact submitted public comments this evening. Going to move on to item number three, the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes minutes from the May 6, 2020, regular meeting and certain budget amendments. The budget amendments appropriate $82,118 in FEMA grants and $58,673 from the Beach Nourishment Capital Reserve to public buildings, repairs, and maintenance, $40,799. Sanitation, garbage, $20,157. And beach protection professional services, $79,835 to cover year-end expenditures and contract costs. The budget amendment also transfers $29,500 from contingency to legal professional services, $12,000 in sanitation recycling, $17,500 to cover year-end costs. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve is presented. This is Nancy Kavaness.
Any further discussion of the motion on the floor?
No.
If they're being done, I'll do a roll call for approval. Mayor Pro Tem, Monica Thibodeau?
Aye. Monica Thibodeau.
Councilmember Rob Mooney?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandy Whitman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nancy Kavaness?
Aye.
And Mayor Don Kingston, aye. The motion is approved at five to zero. Move on to item number four, public hearing discussion consideration of proposed full year 2021 budget. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Town Attorney Robert Hobbs. And there is a three-second delay and Robert is remote this evening. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget. If you have any comments or would like to speak, then I guess, Christian, will the comments be entered remotely?
If they have comments, they can type them into the question and answer box and we will read.
Now, there were several comments read during the public comment period that pertained to the budget. Would you like to have, would council members like to have any of those comments reread during this public hearing or are you okay with what was already read previously?
I'm fine with what was read.
That's fine. Fine. I think, Robert, the consents to the councils are okay, that what was already read?
Very good. I am not seeing any typed comments. Christian, have you received any?
We have not received any comments in the question and answer box.
Okay, then unless there's any other comment, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing on the proposed budget.
Just want to remind everyone that the connections may not be the best, but did you all hear that? I hope. If not, please respond via email or chat. Chris, are you going to make a presentation?
I was not going to make a formal presentation, but I would just, for anyone listening and for council, like to state that there was no intent for the budget to be adopted tonight, that previously council had scheduled two work sessions on the budget, one which will be a week from today, June 10th at 3:00 p.m. here. That'll be a recessed meeting of this and that'll be the first work session. And then another budget work session is planned for June 17th at 1:00 p.m., again in this room. So I would expect that there would be more information, more comments coming from the public over the next several days and there's time for council to get those and to absorb those into the discussions of the budget. Again, I emphasize that the only thing we need to do is make sure we adopt the budget by June 30. And anything else, anything else we have to do to make, you know, to make the decisions that you feel are the decisions to make, we can meet as many times as you'd like in order to do that.
There was a few questions in the public comment that could be kind of addressed or can you just review how easily it is, easy it is for people to see your presentation that you made to us at the budget presentation we had mid-month?
The presentation is available online and we have been referring people to that when we've gotten, when we've gotten questions. The questions that we got, we will respond to from the Shaners specifically. Those are questions that will be easy enough to respond to and we will reach out and respond to them.
Super.
I would also remind all those listening remotely or watching remotely that you can continue to send in comments through the Q and A or through the chat and they'll be read at the end of this meeting.
Done.
Going to go on to item number...
We have a question about if council responds to public comments or questions. Would you like just to address that so that people know as they send in public comments that you may not respond here?
I'm not sure I understood the question.
Like, in other words, we don't respond right to public comments?
Yeah, just make a note back that we do not respond to public comments. Item number 4B, public hearing discussion consideration of resolution 20-04, a resolution that Town Council, the Town of Duck, North Carolina, adopted the Outer Banks Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And once again, turn this over to our Town Attorney, Robert Hobbs.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing for proposed resolution 20-04, the Outer Banks Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. At this time, I'll turn it over to Joe Hurd, who'll make a presentation on behalf of the town staff.
Turn it over to Joe. Up is, you know, we've had a lot of different efforts, you know, that we've been looking at recently with the vulnerability assessment, flood damage prevention ordinance. We have a land use plan that'll be coming before you shortly. What is a hazard mitigation plan and what role does this particular document play in our community? There are three main functions that this type of plan has in North Carolina, the first of which is really what it's intended to do, and that is to outline all the different ways that we as a community can protect people and property from natural and man-made hazards. That's really the bottom line. As we're doing that, there are two other important functions that this plan has, one of which, by adopting this plan, our community maintains its eligibility for mitigation funding and disaster relief from FEMA, as well as state agencies that might accompany that. And finally, by having this plan in place, it's a very significant piece of our community rating system and we get a lot of points for having this type of plan and implementing the recommendations of the plan. So that's a way that it also helps reduce our flood insurance rates as a community that benefits every property owner in Duck. So with all that in mind, that's why we're, that's why we've spent 15 months or so on this effort. So this particular plan's a little different. It seems like we've tweaked things about the hazard mitigation plan over the years. Originally, it was just a Town of Duck plan. Every community on the Outer Banks had their own separate plan. Then there was two iterations ago, we all joined in with Dare County on a Dare County plan, all seven unincorporated counties and six municipalities. The last time we engaged in this effort, back in 2015, we were encouraged by the state to look at a regional plan and for better or worse, they included an entire Albemarle region in the plan. And that had the benefits for them of having a streamlined process and, you know, picking up a lot of different counties in one plan. But the downside to that is that there's a lot of different needs that we have here in Dare County, Currituck County, on the Outer Banks, that they don't have in some of those counties across the sound, on the Albemarle side of the sound there. So this time around, they opted to partner with Currituck County and Dare County, including all the municipalities in Dare. So the way the process works, established a steering committee, 36 members. There are obviously representatives from all of the communities, a lot of different departments. This wasn't just, this isn't a planner's thing. You know, you had people from emergency management, public works, finance, even manager. From the government side, the other thing that we really wanted to do was bring in some different perspectives. So we had surveyors, engineers, insurance agents, Realtor. We had business owners on that committee. And I did want to take one moment to just segue to express our appreciation to Jim Braithwaite and Matt Price, who volunteered to help serve as Town of Duck representatives on this committee and participated throughout and added their insights into that. So we definitely wanted to recognize and thank them for their participation in that and making it a better plan as a result. There were four committee meetings over the course of a year. There was a very substantial public survey conducted, kind of ended around this time last year. Over 850 public responses were received as far as issues that were important to people in Dare and Currituck Counties. Then with the communities, each of us involved developed our own individual plans and recommendations that were specific to our town. All of those are included as appendices to the main planning document. And then the consultants on this project with Wood compiled all that, a lot of background information that's required by FEMA and State Department of Public Safety, and they compiled all of those community plans into one cohesive document. Now, that document is, it is available online. It is 648 pages in length, counting all those individual plans and appendices. So I'm not going to attempt to come close to even three of the 648 pages, but I did want to cover some of the high points to, again, give people an understanding of what the document is, what it contains, and then they can go online. We have links to it on our website and they can go online and, you know, and dig into it a little deeper if they want, or they can certainly talk with staff, Sandy Cross or I. So one of the things it does is identify what kind of hazards we have. So here on the Outer Banks, things that they consider to be a moderate risk, in other words, you know, maybe not a high odds that it would happen, and if it does happen, the impacts may not be as great as they would with other types of hazards. So we have droughts, hazardous material spill there at the bottom, cybersecurity type issues up there in the top. If we're looking at things that have a much higher probability and greater potential of damage for us here on the Outer Banks, we're looking at things like hurricanes, flooding, even wildfires have potential in our area there. So it goes through and identifies, these are just samples, this isn't everything, but to give you some idea. The plan goes on and then one of the important pieces of it is what we call a capability assessment. So we're looking at, okay, we've got these goals and objectives. What is the capability of our community to make these things happen? So it looks at what kind of plans do we have in place? What types of policies and regulations do we have as a community that support these goals and objectives that we'll touch on in a little bit? What is the political climate, you know, or is there a willingness of the government to get involved and, you know, make us a more resilient community? Do we have enough staff, funding, resources to accomplish a lot of these things that we'll be looking at? So it evaluates all of those for each community. And then the meat of the plan is what we call the mitigation strategies. That is what we've included in your packets. It's a larger, little larger document that you have a copy of. So this is, we have 28 different strategies that were identified and annually, we report to the state and FEMA what activities we've done to accomplish these different strategies. So again, I'm not going to go through all 28, but just wanted to highlight a few of these to give people an idea of what types of things we're doing. these to give people an idea of what types of things we're doing to help mitigate hazards in our community, to help prevent damage from occurring, to help make it a safer place. They're required everywhere, but here they are to help mitigate some of the potential issues we face with high winds if we have a significant storm or hurricane, flood vents, elevating buildings. All of those are ways that we have adopted development standards to help minimize damage and loss in our community. Secondly, another significant project for us, beach nourishment, monitoring of that project, and then maintenance annually with dune planting. So we have a whole series of activities here that we do that really helps protect those properties, particularly along the beachfront, but even properties behind there as we help keep those dunes nice and healthy. Flipping over to the Sound side, we have a significant Soundside shoreline as well. And just to put up here as an example, the area we're looking at for our living shoreline project there between Sunset Grill and Resort Realty. So that's a way that we're looking at that as a project that hopefully that'll be successful and we can expand upon in the future. Stormwater management, for years and years in our budget, we've set aside some money. Some of it's been tied to pedestrian improvements that have been made along the Duck Trail. We've been able to dovetail with that project, but some of them have just been separate as we've really beginning with the large Tuckahoe project back in the day, but pretty consistently have put money toward this particular issue in town. We focused for many years on Highway 12 and keeping that passable. That's been our main focus. But we do recognize that there are some neighborhoods in the town that have had some flooding on multiple occasions, and that's something we may want to be looking at a little closer in the future. So we'll probably have some conversations about that moving forward. Other types of ordinances and plans, you'll be hearing a little bit tonight, and certainly a little bit more as we get into potential adoption of a fire code. Again, a great way of having standards in place to help prevent disastrous situations from occurring. And then we have planning efforts like our land use plan that you'll be seeing here in just a couple months there on the right. We also have things like public education. So you can see up here, we have an example of our open house at Firehouse there where we invite families to come in, learn about programs, get a lot of safety tips in the process. So really nice event we're able to do. But Fire Department, Police Department, they don't limit themselves to just that one day. I mean, they're out there. That's one of the things that our Community Resource Officer does, is talk with people. That's one of the things our lifeguards do, is help educate people about safety and particular issues that are important to us. The other one up top is related to our flood damage prevention, that low risk is not no risk, teaching people that flooding can occur even if you're in an X zone. And finally, things like the rip current signs that we use there in the middle, another lot of safety messaging we do annually. So those cover a lot of the things that we, the types of things that this plan addresses, the types of activities it encourages, and that we'll put in there as we inform FEMA and Department of Public Safety about what we are doing as a community to help minimize hazards in our area and the damage from them. So tonight, you've got a recommendation from a steering committee for this plan you have before you. This plan has a little different process than the land use plan, for instance, in that FEMA and Department of Public Safety have already reviewed and approved it, so it meets their standards. The planning board looked over the plan at their last meeting and voted to recommend approval by unanimous vote of 5-0. And so tonight, this is really the last step in the process. So we're just asking the town council to review and consider adoption of the Outer Banks Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, which includes Duck's Hazard Mitigation Plan in it. Mayor, that concludes my presentation, but I'd be glad to answer any questions that the council members might have.
Any questions from council?
I'd just like to thank everybody involved in this. It's a tremendous amount of work regionally and then taking it down to our level, and it's great to know that it's been so carefully taken care of. So thank you.
Joe, I'd like to thank the planning board for the job they did on it. They spent a lot of time.
Okay, at this time, if there are any public comments on this proposal, if you'll please enter those into the record to be read.
To the record to be read.
There are none, Robert. There's one coming in now.
So this is from Pamela Dutton. Does the committee advocate for a bridge in Currituck County to mitigate the risk to people trying to leave the Outer Banks during a hurricane?
And I'm glad that I can answer that question with a big yes. The recommendation number 16 on the list does specifically pull out that item. The action description is to, the way it's written up is to lobby North Carolina Board of Transportation and North Carolina Department of Transportation and North Carolina Turnpike Authority for the construction of the Mid-County Bridge. So what we do annually in our reports is kind of provide FEMA with an update on that project because it is important for several reasons as it relates to this plan, providing an evacuation alternative, as well as providing relief from some of the traffic that might be problematic as well. So that is covered in the plan.
Thank you. At this point, I do not see any other typed comments. And Christian, were there any comments submitted prior to the meeting?
Submitted prior to the meeting?
No. Okay, thank you. Then seeing no other public comments, then I'll close the public comments and close the public hearing, and we'll turn this back over to council for deliberation.
Thank you, Robert. Any further discussion by council? For me, there being none, I'll entertain a motion. I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution Number 20-04, Resolution of the Town Council and the Town of Duck, North Carolina adopting the Outer Banks Regional Hazards Mitigation Plan. The motion is made by Sandy Whitman. Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, I'm going to call the roll. Mayor Protemp, Monica Thibodeau.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob Mooney.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandy Whitman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nancy Cavinius.
Aye.
Mayor Don Kingston notes aye. The motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you, Joe, and your staff, and the planning board.
Yes.
Moving on to item number five, old business items referred from previous meetings. We have one subject tonight, the overview of the proposed fire ordinance, and I assume Chief, Deputy Chief, Bashlet is going to cover that.
I think I got it figured out now. Get my notes here. So first off, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Town Manager Layton, thank you guys for providing me the opportunity to present on this this evening. Hello, is that better?
Speak loudly.
Okay.
Speak loudly.
Got to get my outside voice on. So obviously, we'll be going over the proposed fire prevention and protection ordinance. When we started this process, we were aware that our current ordinances were widely spread across what we have out there and not very well defined. As you can see in this slide, we've got them in several places, kind of all over the place. So trying to find something was hard for somebody that may be looking for an answer to a question they have, which resulted in a lot of questions coming back to us. So we wanted to streamline where these ordinances were found, make them easier to understand. We reviewed what constituted our local risks and encumbrances while referencing other local fire prevention ordinances, just to ensure that we had some validity to what we were thinking. And then we also collaborated closely with the Community Development Department as the ordinances that we're presenting here also assist with, as Joe just went over, CRS and hazard mitigation. So then to consistency with fire safety message. When we set our goals of creating a document that provided consistent, easily read, and easily located information relating directly, we set our goal, rather, of creating a document that provided this consistently easily read, easily located information. We also wanted to provide people with when, what, and where someone can burn to reduce that potential for a hazardous fire outbreak. We needed to establish the authority of the fire code officials as fire inspections transitioned from the way we used to do it using building inspectors as a primary lead to using code enforcement or fire code officials within the Duckfire staff. We also wanted to address the frequently received questions that we had come up with various ordinances through the years. So in some of that, we were trying to kind of move all that in the right direction. Specifically, some of those questions pertain to access and hydrants. Then our final goal was to make sure that these were designed to be educational and functional. It was very important to us to stress that learning about the potential effects of violation that were not needed or not complying to an ordinance that we've proposed was much more effective in a lot of cases and provided a lot more permanence than a punitive result. A lot of times, just a little bit of education goes a long way. We also used functionality checks, which provided us with a metric again, to ensure that we were working towards the best interest of all of our stakeholders and while specifically tailoring items towards the Town of Duck's vision. So the first two sections of the proposed ordinances are 9601 and 9602. They're a little dry, they're not real fun to make a slide for because they are the purpose and the definitions. And I didn't think everybody wanted a spelling class tonight on definitions. But the purpose really lays out the meat and potatoes of what the ordinance is supposed to do. It provides a singular location, and then the definitions, rather, provides a singular location to find any pertinent definitions laid out throughout the rest of the ordinances. We get into 96.03, which is Fire Prevention Code Adoption. North Carolina Fire Code is a document put out through, it's basically the ICC Fire Code that is put out, and then the state adopts and amends. What 9603 would do is establish the adoption of the current North Carolina Fire Code, any amendments and all appendices, as well as provide us the authorization for fire investigations and the authority necessary for our fire code officials. It also helps to explain the process for abatement and appeals of any violations. In our next section, which is 9604 pertaining to fires, when we were developing this section, we considered the environment that we're all so fortunate to live in here, right? It is a little fragile for us, though, specifically dealing with fire prevention. A lot of our homes are right up, directly contacting, in a lot of cases, very dense scrub and brush. So in some of that, we wanted to make sure that we were keeping that in the back of our head as we continued to push through development of some of this. When you combine some of that with wind, it presents us with very interesting exposure conditions that are not necessarily found elsewhere in the world. We again wanted to provide clear answers to the common questions that we've received over time and put them in a single, easy-to-read section. So if somebody's looking for an answer, it's easier to find, it's easier to get to an And we also realized that we needed to create some authority to limit or stop burning when necessary. Currently, we have no real authority. If somebody wanted to burn, they can burn, and we have no real authority other than some nuisance pieces to stop that. This ordinance seeks to give a little bit of teeth there to be able to stop that unsafe burning when it occurs. And the last thing we wanted to do there was clarify what you're actually allowed to burn in Duck. We didn't want to be the fun police there, right? We still want to allow things to be done inside of the ordinance in a safe manner. So in 9604, we referred back, actually, and this is where I'll show you where the definitions piece comes to play, we referred back to 9602 for any definitions, but we explained what is allowed, what is prohibited, and what is exempt as far as burning goes. For example, the only allowed burning is a contained fire. We came up with that term using some verbiage that actually came out of the North Carolina Fire Code, but it lines up with everything, so it makes it easier to read and easier to back up for us as well. In 96.02, we established, just to clarify a little bit, what a contained fire is. A contained fire would be an outdoor fire where the fuel being burned is contained in a fireproof container such as an incinerator, burn barrel, outdoor fireplace, or a barbecue grill. We also laid out the rules for contained fires as far as where they can be, right? We don't want somebody to light up their outdoor fireplace in the carport. That would not be a good situation for us. So an example of that would be, a contained fire can't be set on an unimproved lot. Must be set further over 25 feet from a structure to provide adequate exposure clearance there and limit that risk of fire spread. And also requires responsible supervision.
Trey, can I ask you a question about that last part? The responsible supervision part. So it says in here in Section F, a competent person 14 years, or, I don't know, to me, 14 years seems a little bit young to be in charge of watching a fire, and that might be like in the driveway, even if it's in a burn barrel or whatever.
And I believe that we used existing language in some other ordinances, if Chief, if you've got a piece to that.
Yeah.
She's a little more versed in why we used that particular age.
That's fine. I am. So one thing, we wanted to make sure we created the ordinance that we were in line with the other towns, and that was the standard language pretty much with every other town, that it was 14 years of age. To clarify, especially for those out in Zoom world, what we tried to do, we had nothing before, and actually, the mayor experienced this with a pyrotechnic fire, but right now, if someone wants to burn all the debris in their yard, they can. It's a simple permit. It's a simple permit with forestry. We don't think this environment, I think you all would agree, it's a little fragile. We wanted to be able to control that, but if you have small debris in your backyard, you've got some leaves that came down, a few branches after a hurricane, we don't want to totally restrict that. That's the contained fire piece. So, if you put in a burn barrel, you feed it slowly, you do the rules in the ordinance, then we're okay with that. Everyone else in their ordinances around burning in your backyard for debris or vegetation had the 14-year-old and the other things we put in there. So, we just wanted to be consistent with the other towns in what they did. We didn't want to say 16, or, I mean, we can change it if you want, but that was consistent with the other ordinances.
Well, along the lines of us adopting a 10-foot building height requirement, to me, 14-year-olds, we can discuss this if you guys want to, but 14-years-old, to me, seems a little bit young. And I wouldn't want to be, having a 14-year-old be responsible for an open fire, burn barrel or not, it just, you know, 14-year-olds have a limited attention span.
Sure, and that's at the will of all of you, no heartache there if we raised that number, but that's what was consistent with the other towns.
The one thing I will say is that the intent tonight was to present this to council, get some comment, but not necessarily to adopt it tonight. We would bring that back, and that's certainly one of the items we can flag for further discussion when we get to the adoption piece, if that works.
I think you raise a good point.
So, moving on from there, we did provide in that some exemptions, specifically for fires set for fire department trainings, fires needed to be set by state agencies such as forestry or federal agencies such as U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and emergency burns for town purposes. The last thing that we kind of did in this section was we relocated our current beach fires and pyrotechnics ordinances. And again, that was just to clean it up, to make it easier for folks to find, to answer the questions that they may have had, that we were commonly getting, that were so hard to find and navigate through. Kind of putting everything in one central location that way. So, in 96.05, which is our life safety piece, we addressed our biggest concerns in response, which are unimpeded access down a street and clearance to hook a hydrant. Being able to get to the fire and have the water supply to fight it is a huge piece. This particular picture that I've selected to go with the slide here is a fire that is not in our town, is out of town. However, we had major access issues due to both the design of the road that we were trying to access this fire down and vehicles that had been parked on the side of the road prior to that fire. We addressed some of both of those issues in this piece of the ordinance. We also had water supply issues at this fire, not necessarily from the clearance to hook a hydrant, but from the distance to a hydrant. And the Fire Prevention Code actually, or the North Carolina Fire Prevention Code actually addresses that piece as well. So, for us, this was a very important piece for the emergency response side to an incident. So, in 9605, life safety, we started with how do we get to the emergency call, right? First, somebody recognizes the emergency, this is just the chain of events that happens. You have 911 called, dispatch occurs. At this point, pager goes off, we're deploying resources. That's the response stage. Initiate action is our arrival, and then control and mitigate is what we have to do after the initial actions occur. We don't have a lot of control of a lot of these pieces. So, what these ordinances try to do is take some of the surprises and roadblocks that we may run into out of that way. Life safety in particular tries to mitigate some of those before they happen. As the adage goes, an ounce of prevention's worth a pound of cure. And in this case, that's really what we're trying to do there. So, in 9605, which is the life safety provisions, we address a multitude of issues related to ensuring safety both during and prior to emergency incidents. Fire lanes and access, I know there's a big one in there. What we address with it is actually taken directly out of the North Carolina Fire Code. It comes from Chapter 5, Section 503.2.1, I should know that off the top of my head, dealing with fire access road dimensions. That's laid out in the state Fire Code, we didn't just come up with the numbers here. Again, this is a frequently asked question that we're receiving, so laying this information out for folks to get it to them a little more easily was helpful in our eyes, putting it in those ordinances. As far as protection of fire hydrants and fire sprinklers provisions, they're both the same. They came almost word for word out of the North Carolina Fire Prevention Code. If we tweaked any words or verbiage in it, it was simply to make it easier to read and understand the intent of the code right there. If you've ever stuck your head in a code book, you will understand how confusing they can be, so in an attempt to try and clarify some of that for folks that have these questions, that's kind of where those pieces came from. The last piece is our hazardous mitigation and dealing with our hazardous material storage, kind of the do's and don'ts, if you will, of where to store stuff. Again, in designing this to be educational, most folks probably don't think about the fact that they're storing a 20-pound propane cylinder in the carport right next to a baseboard heater and the potential hazard that that creates for them underneath of their house that they sleep on the third floor of. So, this kind of allows us to educate folks on some of these issues that may come up. And as far as maintenance of vegetation goes, Mayor can probably speak to this the best of anyone, making sure that we maintain our vegetation in a state that doesn't allow for that rapid exposure issue that we can see here due to the wind-driven fire that we have seen in the past.
That's number three? Is that what you were just talking about? The uncontrolled growth of weeds, grass, yada, yada?
Yes.
Yeah. So, can you just explain that a little bit better, please?
As far as...
What does that mean?
It is really to prevent a situation where you have, I'm trying to think of a good example, a growth of grass that presents a true and present fire danger because it is allowed to grow to a state of disrepair, if you will. It's not really disrepair, but to a state of, you know, a yard that has grown to 36 inches and the grass is now turned into hay is certainly a fire danger for the houses on either side of it. So, in an attempt to make it where we can go in and mitigate some of that issue should it occur somewhere.
So, we're not talking about, like, a lot of the neighborhoods in Duck have a lot of growth, like, right out here? That's kind of wild stuff.
It would not so much pertain to natural growth of an undeveloped lot. It is the, correct me if I'm wrong here, Chief, it's more looking at the allowance of a developed lot to create a condition in which fire could spread to the next-door neighbor's lot and continue to spread lot to lot. If that makes sense.
Maybe we could just make that a little bit more clear.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is that some, well, we can talk about it too, but is that something that the fire department is going to go along and cite people for, or kind of say, this looks very hazardous?
So, typically, these types of ordinances in other areas actually have a definable number, say, 24 or 30 inches of vegetative growth to substantiate what you're looking at there. We went back and forth on a little bit of that. It is also realistically, that one is probably more complaint-driven to elicit a response because if your neighbor doesn't mow their grass on Thursday, we're not going to go out and say, you need to mow your grass because you didn't mow your grass on Thursday, if that helps.
So, maybe, it wouldn't likely be complaint-driven then? So, if somebody doesn't mow their grass all summer, and the neighbor calls up and says, you know, there's 30, 36 inches of hay in my neighbor's yard, then that may require a response?
Yes.
I'll give an example. We get calls once in a while, and we had one recently, I believe, in Caroline Dunes, where a homeowner complained because the neighbors had charcoal briquettes that they were just chucking in the backyard, you know, either the neighbors were doing it or whatever. So, is it a safety hazard? Absolutely. Do we have a right to go on their property and say, hey, don't chuck your briquettes? No. This would be another example of, we're not going to go running around looking for uncut lawns, but if there is a complaint, someone's concerned that their neighbor is letting the property go and the vegetation's this high and we can, it's a dry season, they're saying it's a five for deer forestry, those are things at least we can go back to. Also, it's an opportunity for any citizen to be able to look at this ordinance and say, hey, you know, is that wrong? So, maybe I do need to look at those things. So, it's designed to be more educational, but to at least give some teeth. Great example is people that want to burn in their backyard. Again, we're not going to be running around, you know, we've had a couple situations. We had someone with a burn barrel just getting rid of their old checks a few years ago, totally safe, away from the house, older guy with a hose. Technically, he could do that, but it was complaint-driven, we had to go to it. With this ordinance, it actually say, you know, what was the complaint? Because you were scared it was burning. He actually was doing the right thing by this ordinance. So, it just gives us, it's educational, he can go now. We had the call the other day, someone wanted to burn, said, wait till about July 1st, and I can tell you exactly what you need to do. They wanted to do the same thing, burn in their backyard. So, it helps our citizens know what they can do and not do, and then if we have a situation where a citizen's concerned, at least we have some teeth if we need it. So, with any of this, not just to address the vegetation. But if you want to be more specific with vegetation, we can. Again, that's why we're here tonight, we can look at any of this, we can make it stricter. We're trying to make it more educational and safety-driven.
So, just a couple more slides, I promise it won't take much longer. In 9606, alarm systems, we just took basically Chapter 111, current alarm systems ordinance, again, moved it here for some clarity because it does deal with some of the fire provision pieces. Fire code overlapped, the North Carolina Fire Code actually overlaps some of the alarm system requirements, so having that in one area, I think, will help people reduce the number of questions they're sending in on it. And then last, but not least, we have 9607, which is mutual aid agreements. These are typically written agreements that are already in place. The ordinance simply reinforces the statutes and helps with some of the workers' comp pieces and authority outside of territorial limits if necessary, or immunities outside of territorial limits, excuse me. The mutual aid piece to us is very important. This was commonly seen by us in several other locales ordinances, so we felt that it was probably pertinent to add. But this is an important piece to us because, as you can see from the two pictures that I've put up here on this particular one, there's five different departments that we regularly work with, and I know it's kind of hard to see some of the helmets in the smaller pictures there, but these are departments outside of us that we regularly work with. We strive to maintain and are committed to maintaining excellence through our training with our mutual aid partners. Forging strong relationships with these partners is important to us because we all rely on each other, and at the end of the day, we are all better together there. So, that's kind of where this piece, for me, hits home a little. And then lastly, is the infamous make it go question slide. I do have one thing before any questions. I did want to thank the community development staff that worked side by side with us and helped us through this, and acknowledge the hard work that was put in by everyone when developing this. So, any questions?
I have one.
I have one for yourself.
Oh, yeah, Monica Tibido, sorry, Sandy, I jumped in. I just had a question about, I mean, it's overall, it's a really great idea to consolidate and make it easy to find the ordinances in all one spot. My question is, on the existing ordinances that the town has in place, are they still going to be in the old place, or do they all get reviewed and pulled out? And is that going to be just a real overhaul? Or do you just cross-reference those?
They're basically being removed. There's even in the ordinance, you have, there's some provisions in the ordinance itself that call for eliminating a certain section in its entirety, so it's all being consolidated in this Chapter 96.
Okay, so it is kind of a big...
It's being moved, yeah. Not all, really, even, I would say probably a majority of the proposal are just pieces that we're pulling from different areas, and that's one of the big benefits that Trey had outlined, is that, you know, it gets it all in one place where people know where to go to find out about all things fire. So, that was the intent of it, is just pulling pieces from these other ordinances that were put there at different points in time.
I know, it's a great idea, and then just removing them from where they used to be.
Correct. I found my answer.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions for you. First of all, I think robbery is a couple of good points about the age of being 14. I mean, that does seem relatively young for someone to be responsible. I mean, I think we ought to relook at that age.
And we'll talk to forestry because that wasn't just popped out of the air. You know, we followed the other ordinances around the beach did, but I'll get up with forestry as well because that's a vegetation piece, and that may be something there, so I'll follow up on that for sure.
I mean, the thing is, I understand that trying to be uniform with everybody along the whole beach, but uniquely, this town, this town does not have a lot of children, right? A lot of other towns south of us have a lot of kids, and so, it's probably more important to them to be able to delegate this kind of responsibility to kids. Here, we don't have that many, and the ones that we do have, I don't think we want to be putting them in charge of a fire for any reason. Not that I'm not knocking any of the kids, I'm just saying that they're kids, you know?
Yeah, and I'll just check with forestry because, again, that wasn't just pulled out of the air, so I'll make sure there's some background to that and can bring it back to you.
I think the second point that he made, and I don't know how we really get around this, but the uncontrolled growth of weeds, I'm thinking about, we have a house, a couple houses down from us that's basically in the woods. I mean, you'd have a difficult time fighting a fire at that house. I mean, it would be engulfed as well as the whole woods. And so, is that practical, or is it enforceable, or is there some way we can refine that?
You can't make people cut their, here.
You don't let a hose in the woods where you are.
Okay.
I know, I was gonna say, you can't cut the, make people cut their trees.
Yeah, and Mayor, this is, it's a piece that really comes, it's similar to a lot of our nuisance regulations where, you know, they're enforced, as was mentioned previously, on a complaint basis, but, you know, we have to evaluate and appreciate that different people want different things. You know, not every part of Duck is just a sand dune with little beach grasses. You know, we have a lot of areas that were maritime forest and have, you know, substantial trees and all that, and some owners want that. It doesn't mean that just because they're mature trees that it's overgrown. And so, the staff, you know, fire staff would take a look at that to determine if there were aspects of that situation. You know, what they're really looking at is things that would be unkept, where you might have things growing up and, you know, growing up alongside the house and things where fire could easily spread from a little thing in the lawn to a building with more, much more substantial damage. So, you know, there's some judgment involved in that, but, you know, I think what you heard before is correct, now they would just look at it as a nuisance thing, they would offer advice to that owner if they did see things that, you know, maybe were fire hazards, and, you know, and hopefully, it doesn't have to go any further as far as enforcement. You know, most of what we do in our department is similar in that we never get to the point of actually finding someone or having to threaten to take them to court. You know, we're able to work it out by educating them about why that rule is in place, why it's unsafe for them, why they'd be better served by addressing that issue to protect their own property. So, that's kind of how that would typically work.
And then my third question is grills on decks. Did we deal with that in here? Maybe I missed it.
We can't regulate that.
You can't regulate grills on decks?
We can't regulate that. I mean, I guess you all could, and I'm not even sure if legally we can, Robert, you can weigh in on that one, but it's someone's personal residence, we don't like it. Sometimes we have complaint-driven, you know, and we might be able to run by and say, hey, you know, you might want to do better behavior, but from a legal standpoint, I don't think we have the right to not do it. Do we discourage it? Absolutely. Do we try to educate it? Absolutely. I'll let Robert answer that, I don't think we can put that in there.
I could check into that.
I could check into that, I haven't looked into that.
Any other questions from council? Chris, would the next step be to go to public hearing?
Yeah, if council is comfortable, this is one of those items that doesn't necessarily need a public hearing, but I think that it's wise with something of this nature to have one. And so if council was comfortable, that would be the next, that would be the next step.
I'd like to make a motion that we schedule a public hearing to discuss the, what am I talking about? The overview, I mean, of the new fire ordinance, to discuss the new fire ordinance, or hear, a public hearing on the proposed fire ordinance.
Motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem, Monica Thibodeau. Any further discussion by council? There being none, I'll do a roll call. Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Monica Thibodeau.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob Mooney.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandy Whitman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nancy Caviness.
Aye.
Mayor Don Kingston votes aye. The motion passed five to zero. That will be scheduled for the first meeting in July, I would assume.
Thank you. Just for clarification, we'll come back with an age, and are you comfortable with the vegetative piece?
I just think it needs to be a little clearer.
Okay, all right. So we'll come back with those two items. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, thank you, Deputy Chief.
And an answer on the grills.
Absolutely.
Is that going to come back to us at our mid-month, so that...
No, it would be July.
Okay, so...
July regular meeting.
Public hearing will just be based on the information we have here. Okay, just clarifying, thank you.
All right, moving on to item number six, new business. Discussion consideration of authorizing the town manager to purchase two new vehicles, one for the police department and one for the building inspections department, using revenues from the sale of surplus vehicles and equipment. Chris?
Thank you. The town regularly disposes of surplus equipment, and typically, what we dispose of is, where we get the most bang for our buck when we dispose of items, are usually surplus vehicles that were scheduled to be replaced. In this case, we, we had three vehicles plus a five-ton truck that were being used by the police department that, that were disposed of using the GovDeals platform. In addition, there was equipment that was, that was purchased using the federal 1033 program, and that is, that's a program where, where police departments can, can obtain equipment from the federal government, usually the, usually the Army. And in the past, we've gotten everything from tools to the five-ton truck to other things of that nature. The catch with that is that once, once those items reach a certain timeframe and can be disposed of, the proceeds from that, from the, from the sale of those items have to go back to the police department. So, three vehicles plus a five-ton truck and some additional equipment, the 1033 equipment was sold online, and the town is in the process of receiving $68,899.45 for the sale of that equipment. The request that is coming forward is two-part. The first one is that the, the police department would like to use their 1033 funds as well as some additional funds from the sale of that surplus property to buy a pickup truck, a new pickup truck that would serve as everything from a travel vehicle to a spare vehicle when the, when another vehicle is in, is being serviced, but also to be used for items like Fourth of July, even though we won't use it this year, to put out cones, pick up dead animals on the road, things of that nature. And then the other vehicle that we're looking at purchasing, we have, we have a building inspections vehicle that we use, but frequently, the building inspector's using that, and when we need to, when we need to move equipment from the, when we need to move equipment or obtain materials, we've, we've had to delay or had to put off picking up those items until such time as, as the vehicle is available. We would find it useful and helpful to have another spare pickup truck that we could use, again, using these funds. We're talking about a very simple, cheap vehicle that would be equipped with, with some lighting and decals, but likely two-wheel drive, not four-wheel drive, and just another vehicle that we could use. That would, we anticipate that the purchase of that vehicle, which is, would be about $22,000 plus some upfitting and taxes, would use the, the additional funds of the 68. So between these two vehicles, the 68,000 would be, would be spoken for, and if that were something that council would be willing to, to authorize, then, then we would bring a budget, I would bring a budget amendment back at one of your next work sessions to, to actually appropriate those funds to the proper area. I'll be glad to stand for any questions, and Chief Kido can answer any questions specifically about his request.
Any questions for Chris?
I just have a question on, I mean, I think it's a great idea. So the police vehicle is a pickup truck, but sort of a patrol pickup truck. It's kind of a different animal.
Yeah, he can, he can speak to it. It would, it would be a, it would be a four-person cab, and while he's getting his mic ready, I will, you know, it would be something that would, would, you know, would be lit, would have the, all the other equipment on it so that it could be used in the event that it was, as a spare vehicle. One of the vehicles, the vehicles that were, were sold were, were being used as spare vehicles to a certain extent, and so this would give a vehicle that is in good condition. The other vehicles, and it always amazes me when we sell these items and people pay prime dollar for these items, and they've been through a lot, but that's the nature of auctions, and we, we benefit from that. But John, if you want to speak to, to the, to the nature of the vehicle?
Sure. Essentially, it will be a police outfitted vehicle, a four-wheel-drive capability, so that you understand that all of our Ford Explorers, while they are all-wheel-drive, they're, they're not technically four-wheel-drive, and so that limits our capabilities in going onto the beach should there be a critical need during hurricanes and that sort of situation. Also, as I said, it'll be, part of the cost is upfitting for the lights and sirens and all the capabilities of a normal police car. So with all of our vehicles having been assigned to each of the officers, we don't have any spare capacity, and we don't have any availability for training, so that we, should we need to go out of town or that sort of situation, we would have a vehicle that we could do that with. And then, expectedly, you know, we pick up the dead animals in the road. Towing capacity is really what we require for the trailer, so they're not borrowing vehicles from other town departments. You'll remember our, the gravestones that we had to pick up. So certain things pop up like that, and we just need the four-wheel-drive capability.
Thank you. Thanks for explaining that.
Any additional questions? With that, all entertained, and a motion for authorization.
I'd like to make a motion, we authorize the town manager to purchase two new vehicles, one for the police department and one for the building inspections department, using revenues from the sale of surplus vehicles and equipment.
Mayor Pro Tem, Monica Thibodeau has made the motion. Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, I'll do a roll call. Mayor Pro Tem, Monica Thibodeau.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob Mooney.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandy Whitman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nancy Caviness.
Aye.
Mayor Don Kingston, aye. Motion passed five to zero. And Chris, bring that back.
And I'll bring a budget amendment back to officially do this, probably next week, but maybe the week after.
Thank you. Moving on to item number seven, items referred to in presentations from the town attorney. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, Robert. Item number eight, items referred to in presentations from the town manager. Chris?
Thank you. We will start with the departmental updates, and I will ask Joe to start us off here.
All right, we'll try to keep this short this evening. So we have our permit activity report for the month of May. Kind of similar to what we took a look at last month, really, in terms of fairly steady as far as building permits, but where we saw the drop-off more significantly was down toward the bottom with the trade permits. So still been fairly active, but certainly not as active as last year, which is probably to be expected somewhat. So as we look at our, then going all the way over to the right side and looking at the, the change, you can see that overall, to this point in the year, at the top, they're actually still up a little bit as far as the total number of building permits, the date, you know, that's all the way back to July of last year through this point in the year. However, you can see the drop-offs as we, as we go down with some of the certain types of permits, significantly the trade permits, which again are, that's our plumbing, electrical, mechanical, those types of permits. So in May, just a couple maps here showing where permits were issued. We did have a permit for a new house at 105 Old Duck Road. That's under construction right now. Couple other significant projects there at 130 Shearwater Way. And 142 Seabreeze Drive, some, you know, some more remodel renovation-type projects. Lot of pools and hot tubs and such as well. So just updating on a few of the projects, we did, this morning, receive some of the site plans related to the pedestrian plan and living shoreline projects in that stretch between Resort Realty and Sunset Grill. Those two projects, we are looking, and you'll see that as part of your, your budget proposal, you know, looking at doing those concurrently. There's a lot of benefit to that during the construction project, if we're able to accomplish that. But again, looking at continuation of Phase Four from where the sidewalk stops at Resort Realty, and continuing that up to the crosswalk at Sunset Grill, along with some ADA accessible ramp improvements there at the crosswalk, similar to what was done across the street. So that's moving forward, and we'll begin the, for that project, we actually do, because it wasn't one of the originally permitted ones, we do have to get an NC, NC DOT approval for that section of the sidewalk. Regarding the living shoreline, we are still in the process of obtaining easements. We have a number of property owner associations in that area. We have to obtain, there are six properties in that stretch, four of which are related to neighborhood associations, and, you know, in the process of answering questions, trying to figure out if they have particular concerns or things that can be addressed by the project or by wording in the easement, if it's something that, that's simple. So we're working on those right now. As mentioned, VHB has gotten to a point where they've got some designs together, proposals for a, one option would be a wood or vinyl sill, that would be more of a, if you want to think about maybe a freestanding bulkhead, that would be more of a vertical structure out there in the sound to help break up some of the wave action. But we also have another option, that would be a little more, probably a little more natural, a little more stable in some ways, that would be a rock or stone sill. The difference with those two is that, that has a different profile, so that it impacts more of the, the base and more of the, the bottom of the sound than a vertical sill. So we'll see which of those the environmental agencies want to go with, but we're getting close to the, the point where we would be able to submit those plans for permitting, but we do need to get those easements as, as part of that process. Just a, kind of an example of how it would work with a rock revetment along the, you know, close to the sidewalk, and then as you go out, adding in some sand fill where needed, planting with marsh grasses, and then the sill out beyond that in the, in the sound. We were looking at doing this last month, and then we got hit with all those, we had temporary, where Hazard Mitigation Plan came forward, and then we also had all the temporary standards for the restaurants and other businesses. So, and, you know, the planning board focused their attention on those issues. So we are still looking at, this month, going ahead with the educational piece from the school of government. About, it's about an hour and a half of different sessions related to the new Chapter 160D, where we're going to have to overhaul the zoning ordinance and development regulations to comply with the new state statutes. So one positive, if you will, in the COVID-19 situation is that we've been given a pretty substantial extension on that. We were, we did have to adopt it by the end of the year, not that that would have been problematic, but we've now been given a extension well into 2021 by the state legislature for adoption of those. But that's something that the board will be working on, you know, over upcoming months. Did have an update for you on this. We were originally looking at land use plan going to planning board on next week, June 10th, and then going to the council July 1st. Just due to some of the, the conversation among the advisory committee members on the final draft, we are going to go ahead and try to set up an additional meeting with the advisory committee to have those conversations, so that everyone is comfortable with what they've got moving forward. So that schedule is now looking at planning board July 8th, coming to council in August, at your meeting in August, for consideration and adoption.
Excuse me, Joe, would the planning board, would that be the night that the advisory committee, or does, how does that work? The advisory committee is putting together the final draft, then the planning board will look at it on July 8th?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the advisory committee is really, in this instance, they are the body that's doing the bulk of the legwork in this case. In other words, they've been, you know, working for over a year now, and, you know, have really gotten to the point of sort of compiling a lot of the comments, being sure that key issues are addressed by the plan, things like that. So they are the ones putting together the draft, and then the planning board will, will review to, you know, just see if there are things that, you know, that, that body deals with a lot of development issues. So there are things that they are aware of that, you know, that other people might not be, so it gives, that's why it's a good step to have them review the document, just to see that it seems to be heading in the right direction and making a recommendation to you regarding the document.
Right. Are they, are they doing a presentation to the planning board that night, or are they just simply doing a summary of what they might have, you know, what, I mean, or is it, is it just there to review?
We will have a recommendation and summary, but the presentation... We will have a recommendation and summary, but the presentation itself will be a staff presentation we have encouraged and do hope at both of these meetings with the planning board and council, that we're able to, to get some members from the advisory committee present. I know for several of them, that becomes more difficult as we get into these summer months. I really, really do hate the fact that with the COVID-19 situation, that this all got bumped back a couple of months, because, you know, particularly for our business owners and those affiliated with that, you know, Jeff Shields, Lee Raskin, it's a difficult time of year for them to, to jump out and attend a meeting. So, you know, I don't, I don't like that fact about this, but it's also hard. It's already been delayed for several months, and, you know, do we want to wait until October to, you know, that doesn't seem right either. So we'll move ahead with it, and then they'll have their opportunities to, you know, put their two cents in and, you know, participate in it and make whatever comments they want. Those will be passed along to the board and council.
Thank you.
And that's all I had for you this evening, but certainly if there are any questions you have about any projects, be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Joe.
All right. Next, I'd like to ask Chief Kudo to come forward and update the council on the police department's activities.
Yes, Chief John Kudo from the Town of Duck Police Department. Good evening, Mayor Kingston, council members, Mr. Layton, community members listening remotely. Welcome to Town of Duck Police Comstat. This evening, I want to reiterate that I've been meeting with the sheriff and the Dare County Chiefs. We are discussing best practices addressing common issues, of course, some of our COVID crisis considerations, most recently the protest concerns that we've been having. Mayor, from my position, I want to thank you for signing on to the mayor's letter, really discounting and rebuking those events that happened in Minneapolis. I think it's the first step in saying who we really are, and maybe more importantly, who we're not. So again, thank you for that. So discussing some of the appropriate response to critical incidents, actually, we had a meeting on Monday, the sheriff and all the chiefs. We've been addressing some of the protest issues that have been occurring in Elizabeth City. In fact, we were called for mutual aid last night. Deputies went, eight deputies did respond to Elizabeth City, three officers from KDH. I really only had John Gilreath working for me last night, so we couldn't spare anyone. But we are discussing a protest that's going to occur in Manio on Tuesday, June 9. And I'm going to be instrumental in some of those planning events. So just as early as tomorrow, we'll be going through that, and we'll have better intelligence on that. So enforcing the governor's county declaration, really, what does that look like when we're moving from Phase One to Phase Two? Really, that's given us a little bit of relief from the standpoint of the police department. So now that people are, you know, some of the restrictions are reduced, there, people can go to restaurants now and dine in. So I want to thank town staff for helping us with those guidelines and really helping the businesses, retail, restaurants, and so forth, to understand what those guidelines are and really to manage our expectations. But I want to say that the businesses have been really very cooperative, and as I said, we're getting some ease there. Looking forward to June 26 and some more or lesser restrictions. A little more good news, well-forwarded cop cars can now kill coronavirus with extreme heat. This is a study, actually a group from Ohio State University, I believe, that came up with this idea to use heat to kill coronavirus. It's all the existing AC and heat conditions that are in the vehicle. It's, will be the first in Dare County, certainly. I don't know elsewhere, but I know that we're going to be the test project with this. All of our cars will be, it's kind of a software flash drive thing, so we're not changing any equipment there. It's not free. We're going to, there's going to be a cost associated with this, but for about 15 minutes, the vehicle goes up to 133 degrees, and it cycles through the, the heating cycle and kills coronavirus. And imagine that's with, after a prisoner transport, or even on a daily event at the end of the officer's day or at the beginning. So kind of a really sharp thing to do. Ford's coming through on this one, thankfully. A notable investigation, this was initiated by Chuck Edwards. It began with a small investigation. As you might think, it was a stolen plate by one, one of our residents reported it, but Chuck did a good job of tracking this plate through Mans Harbor, through our systems. It was entered in NCIC, so all of the area locales knew, knew about it. But interestingly, a couple days later, there was a burglary that was reported in the Town of Southern Shores. We were called there, it was Officer Garrett and Tim Armstrong that responded to help Sergeant Eric Brinkley. I let the town manager know that I wrote a letter to Chief Cole, because Sergeant Brinkley actually did a really good job. He found a cell phone at the house that was burglarized in Southern Shores, and he called it, and with a ruse, he found that there were individuals that were staying on Tides Drive in the Town of Duck illegally unauthorized staying there. They were contractors that thought it was okay to stay in the house for a couple of weeks. So the owners came, and it was Jason Garrett and Tim Armstrong that were there to remove these individuals. And Garrett actually did a good job of identifying the stolen plate, and that's the very plate that you see there. The resident wants to keep that to hang on his wall for a good story. But it was our, what came of this were two additional BNEs that occurred the day after this one burglary had happened. I wrote the letter because Eric Brinkley was so sharp in, you know, planning that ruse. And then the next day, he was driving in to work, and he saw this individual riding his bike in Currituck. I mean, just another guy on a beach bike, and his keen sense of observation really resulted in the three BNEs, the theft of the plate, and that sort of thing. So actually, a good job all the way around, nice, nice example of mutual aid. Along with that, we have had a couple of, I didn't use this for another slide, but we've had a couple, two other arrests on stolen plates that came through our system, both actually very good, good examples of our investigative capabilities. And a dog that was running through town that was giving us some grief. Also, some fentanyl concerns that we're still dealing with. We did take another individual in custody. It's a long time problem that we're having, and another Narcan coma situation that we've handled. Travel through Duck, I just used Sea Oats to Corolla, just to give you an understanding that we're about two-thirds there typically. And I was telling you just a couple of weeks ago that we were only experiencing about 6,000 cars coming through the Town of Duck and on into Corolla, but we're at about 40,000 hitting that Sea Oats site, and then about 30,000 going on into Corolla. So when I say two-thirds, you'll probably see activity in the way of 60,000 vehicles through the Town of Duck, and that'll be June, July, August sort of scenario. Our monthly police report, total calls to service, 488. You'll see there's an uptick in our traffic enforcement. I'll get to that in a moment. 16 traffic enforcement actions were taken during the month. Officers conducted two extra patrols of vacant residences at the request of out-of-town homeowners. Three residential property checks were made, three unsecured doors are found, they, they were three for three on that. But as I've explained, we're shifting from property checks and moving on into the business check, and that's where you'll see the 120 business checks that were made. That's in response and to those guidelines to the COVID pandemic situation. Speed enforcement, six warnings were issued, one violation citation at 10 to 15 miles over the speed limit. Traffic enforcement, not speeding, one DWI, and nine other traffic violations. You'll see in our extended speed radar report, I was just looking at the activity there, you'll see the total volume, you'll see that number go up to about 180,000 vehicles. While they are compliant, I was just explaining earlier that at Sandy Ridge, wherever we, whenever we change the speed limit, you're always going to see a little bit of compliance issue there. And usually, it will be just around the change, and DOT changed the sign north of Sandy Ridge area there to 35. So now, understand that people are coming through Corolla, traveling 35, continuing on 35, whereas before, they were slowing down, they were being groomed to slow down from 45 to 35, 25. Now, they're kind of doing 35-ish, 40-ish, and as you see those red tips up there, that's what we'll experience, and hopefully we'll, we'll get to calm that down a little bit. That's my presentation for the evening, available for any questions. And before I go, I do want, I forgot to tell you that another great purpose on that four-wheel drive vehicle is high water levels. So we'll, we'll drive around after a hurricane event or, you know, debris, that sort of thing, where our, you know, we really don't want to subject our explorers to that. So it's a really useful vehicle for us.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Good job. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Next, I'd like to ask Christian Legner to come forward and update the council on town events.
So, thank you, council. Sorry it took me a second to get going there. I just wanted to give you a variety of updates tonight. I've kept my presentations pretty short for the last few council meetings, so I'll attempt to bring you up to speed on all of the massive changes that have happened over the past couple of months. As far as just, you know, general public education that we would normally be doing this time of year, we've already passed the hurricane preparation week, so that was in May. So we did a lot of social media outreach for that, and I have continued to update some of the hurricane outreach information on our website in particular, because the CDC has added, put in additions this year for your hurricane emergency kit. And those include a cloth face mask, hand sanitizer, and sanitizing wipes, because there's a possibility that if people have to evacuate and go to some sort of shelter, obviously in another county, there's none in Dare, that they would want to be prepared to possibly have to be closer to people, although the state is working on providing more socially distanced shelters if needed. We are pushing bike and pedestrian safety. You'll see a little bit more about that when I get to the portion about the brochure. Our typical love the beach, respect the ocean is still going on, so as part of the town's commitment that we talked about, the retreat two years ago, we do, every morning I check that rip current risk that the National Weather Service puts out. If it is moderate or high, we put out a special social media post that we've agreed on with the lifeguards, letting people know about rip currents and when the most dangerous time is, near low tide, how to contact a lifeguard, and how to contact someone if they need assistance, usually calling 911. So we've been working on those since Memorial Day weekend. Of course, we've done a lot of coronavirus updates. When the Joint Information Center was putting out information daily, we were amplifying that daily. So we did switch our e-news to a once-a-day event because we were sharing the county information in that way. The Joint Information Center, we actually haven't been technically, we have, aren't standing down, it's on pause, as Dorothy's calling it, in case we need to ramp up again and assist with that. But for right now, updates are shared by Health and Human Services on Tuesdays and Fridays, typically unless more are needed. So we're looking at switching our e-news for sure to going out on Tuesdays instead of our typical Mondays, so that I can share that update. And then if we need to share whatever update comes on Friday, we think through e-news, we'll do it that way, too. Of course, these updates are being shared on social media and posted on our website also. We've also been using the really great county and state resources that they have, so they have already made social media templates for us to put out for the three Ws, for other public health guidelines, for things very specific to North Carolina. We've also been using some of those items to put out information to help visitors plan for their visit. So today, we had some posts that went out that had a great graphic from the state about what the different phases of reopening are, what phase we're in, and items like, you know, if you want to go out to have dinner, maybe call the restaurant first and see what might be required of you if you need reservations, those types of things. And we also, every time we've had a new executive order or we've had changes in things that directly affect our businesses, we've reached out directly to our businesses to let them know, to give them any support that we could, and to make sure that they had all of the So as part of that, kind of new initiative that's going to roll out next week, we're working to really encourage these public health guidelines in Duck. Of course, you know, there are things that are enforceable, and there are things that are in the interest of public health and safety, that it's, it's our duty to share and to encourage people to partake in. Of course, masks fall in that category. So we are working with the Duck Merchants Association and the DCBA with a three-pronged approach to reach out to our businesses, to really make sure that they understand what the guidelines are, because they've all been very busy reopening their businesses. So we, we want to make sure that, you know, that they may, they may not have had time to read all of this information, so we want to reach out to them. So the first thing that we'll do is promote the Count on Me NC program. If you're not familiar with that, the state has put that out, and they're short trainings tailored to different types of business. You get a little certification when you take it. They give great information on basic COVID-19 safety, keeping both your employees and your customers safe. You get, once you, you do that, you're on their website, so free advertising. If people are familiar with the Count on Me NC program, they click on it, they can see every, they can put in Duck, North Carolina, and see every business that has taken the certification. Outer Banks Visitors Bureau, on their website, they have a tourism pledge, and that is also free advertising. If you send them the information that you are doing at your business to keep your customers and employees safe, they will list your specific guidelines on a special page on their website that they direct people to. The second phase or prong of this approach is working with the DMA. We, we understand a lot of those people are, like I said, still kind of scrambling to get their businesses up and running to comply with all of the recommendations, and they, many of them have less staff than normal because they did not have a lot of lead time to the reopening portion. So we have worked out a deal with them that we are going to assist with updating the Duck Merchants website for right now, and as people, as businesses take the pledge with the Visitors Bureau, or do the Count on Me NC training, we'll go in and update next to the businesses with the little badge. And then we can promote the DMA website. When, you know, we are getting questions on social media about what businesses require masks, what businesses, you know, require reservations, so then we can point them to that updated website. The last portion of this is because masks are not an enforceable part, but they are highly recommended for public health and safety, we have been supported by the DMA and the DCBA to purchase 10,000 disposable masks. They, those two partners together have generously funded nearly two-thirds of that total cost, and the town out of the events budget will be contributing the remaining $2,100, because we did cancel events in June, so we have a little bit of money in FY 2020. And once we get those here, they'll be here next Tuesday. We also have signage and other educational items ready to go, some of which have already been handed out to businesses, restaurants in particular. We will laminate signage. That signage can be everything from required signage, like emergency maximum occupancy, to, to things like making sure they have enough printouts of an employee health screening checklist, things like that, because they may not have time to be getting this all together while they're also running their business. So we would also continue directly contacting them, following up with them, making sure that if, as things change, that they know they can come to us for some of those resources. As far as the masks go, the idea behind the masks is really just, they can be difficult to source right now a little bit. So the purchase of the masks for us is, if businesses would like them, they can use them either for their employees until they source their own reusable masks, or if they really want their customers to wear them and they need a box of masks until theirs get delivered, something like that, that we can help provide those to fill that gap. So I might pause there. Do you have any questions about that? And that'll, that'll roll out next week. We'll be outreach-ing to the businesses. It'll be myself, Betsy, Kim, the Clearly, we recommend canceling events through July. The current executive order limiting outside groups to 25 people doesn't end until the end of June, and so I feel relatively sure that it won't go from 25 people to 150 overnight. So we're recommending that event cancelization. So we have not finalized anything about events in August, so for right now, my plan would be to bring that update to you at our July first meeting. Having said that we canceled everything, it's only technically true. We are going to offer some virtual items. Virtual Fitness on the Green begins June 16th. Zen &amp; Zip has decided that they would still like to sponsor. The yoga and the dynamic flow have, both are already set up to offer Facebook Live classes. So they're going to do those through our Facebook platform. So we'll send people to the town of Duck, and they can practice yoga or dynamic flow on the beach, or in their beautiful beach house if they would like. We're excited about that. We are going to pilot a virtual concert near the end of the month. This came about because the Duck, sorry, the Dare County Arts Council has been doing some virtual concerts. And we had already been required to pay a deposit to this band earlier before everything shut down. And so they have agreed to do the virtual concert for the cost of the deposit, no extra money, so we break even there. And we're interested to see how it goes. Other bands are also interested in doing virtual concerts for a greatly reduced fee as well. But we want to get numbers on what happens at that June 25th one. And Betsy's working really hard to continue to work on some activities that we'll be able to offer, other virtual events, DIY things like virtual 5Ks, and other socially-distanced options. So that brings me to the Jazz Festival. We have not made any firm decisions about the Jazz Festival. We are still in the pattern that I discussed with you guys last time. Our fire chief is the one who came up with the little mask on the cartoon duck. So we're still kind of in a holding pattern right now. PNC obviously has continued to offer to present, no matter what happens. If we have a reduced-size festival, if we cancel altogether, if we have a full-blown thing, they're still in, with the option of rolling that money over to next year if necessary. We just found out the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau has also awarded us a grant. While I haven't had a chance to speak with Diane yet, I do believe that they will allow us to roll that money to next year if necessary. And so I'm working right now on updating social media and the website with some stay-tuned information. That will also include information about some of our sponsors that are still in, no matter what, with the agreement that they'll roll their sponsorship over to next year. We have been conversing with other fall festivals, and the North Carolina Association of Festivals and Events, we've done a few webinars with them, looking at other festivals across the state, you know, and regionally. You know, I've been talking to the Outer Banks Seafood Festival, I'm trying to get in contact with the Hatteras Oyster Festival, and the Mustang Music Festival, which are around the same weekends, to see how they're falling with their decisions. So again, we will need to make some type of decision by mid-July to late-July. So stay tuned for that. And just some kind of housekeeping items. We're very excited, the brochure has been finalized. I was awaiting a shipping schedule, but just before the meeting, I found out that all of the brochures will be delivered on Tuesday. So as part of all of the outreach to the businesses, we'll also bring them beautiful brochures to hand out. It is already available on the website. I've posted it, and I've posted a couple of teaser images on our social media as well, of some of these great images. And because we are very uncertain about things like events, on the left there, I know it's small, but usually there's a four-page insert that covers all of our events and covers the Jazz Festival. So we kept one page for events where we basically said, you know, we don't really know what's happening, we've had to cancel some, we very much miss everyone, please stay tuned to our website to find out how you can still connect with the town of Duck. And the Jazz Festival side promotes the weekend of the Jazz Festival, but the last paragraph urges people to stay tuned to our website and social media platforms so that they can find out more information. We use the two other pages to highlight safety this year. So using the "Watch for Me and See" information, we have information about being a safe pedestrian and biking safely, including Duck-specific guidance that says if you are a competent and comfortable cyclist, please use the bike lane, riding with traffic. And then we also have rip current information there. Our newsletter that we typically mail to all the property owners is mailing early next week, Monday or Tuesday. We'll have hard copies available at Town Hall, and we'll have the full thing on the website, and we'll promote that for people to check it out. Because it's a little later in the year than normal, it's a little bit different than normal. We have some highlights in there, including hurricane season education, where people can find updated information about hurricanes, especially if they have to evacuate while COVID is still going on. We have some general information about COVID-19 safety and education, event updates, as much as we could give. We have, there's quite a few articles in there about resiliency programs within the town, and a land use plan update. And that is the end of all my talking. I did want to show you this sign. I know many of you have seen these signs, and I know, Mayor, that you had a chance to approve these. These signs were done in conjunction with Dare County and the other towns, so we were looking for information that people, we could put on beach accesses. Social distancing is the thing that is highlighted here, and not masks or other things, because these signs are meant to be placed in outdoor areas where people most likely would not be wearing a mask, because hopefully they would be socially-distanced and doing things like swimming. We also chose not to have six feet on there specifically, because we wanted these signs to be able to be used all summer and fall if necessary. Hopefully, it won't be, but if necessary. And so in case any of the requirements change for the recommended social distancing, we really just wanted it to be a general message. At the bottom of the sign, there's a Dare County website, a page called "Stay Safe", and that is somewhat linked to the COVID-19 page. People can go to that page, they can flip over to the COVID-19 information and find out specifics about what is recommended right now. So if someone looked at that and said, "What is the social distancing recommendation?", they could go to that website, and it's updated by the county. And each town has a little kind of bullet point there where, you know, we got to put our little elevator pitch information about our town, and where you could find more information specific to each town about summer events or summer changes. So these have been installed in Duck at every beach access. These large ones, like this one, are on every lifeguard stand, and we have a handful throughout the park and on the boardwalk. All right, any questions?
Thank you, Christian.
All right. Thank you.
Keep them, keeping everybody behaving, that's going to be great.
I try.
All right, and then next would be Chief Black.
Go through my presentation while we do this. And there you have it. Good evening. It's great to be back in the room with council staff. I was one of the designated Zoomers during the last couple of months. I prefer to be in the room with all of you, so good evening every night, or everyone tonight. Tonight, I will go over our normal Duck Fire Department report. And I will start with our calls to date. As you can see, there's a significant decrease from this May from last May, as you can expect, definitely, as far as the year as a total, it's down really from March and April, because when you start to look at May, we're close to last year. So as we opened up, calls increased, so the real difference is during that March and April time period. Again, I'll show you the breakdown with the pie chart. Again, about 50% is medical-related, and then we had a little bit of everything over the course of the month. And I know you folks have that already, you got that earlier today. As far as training hours, 232 training hours, they'll actually go up a little bit, like I reported out last week, or last month. We did do online training for the volunteers. I'll get to our COVID response in a minute. We still haven't put those into our system yet, so that the training hours for May will go up, and you'll see. Fire inspections, we talked with Sandy and Community Development, we have held off on fire inspections until fall. The business has had enough to deal with, with the ones we had left, to get open and meet the requirements for just opening under our conditions right now. So we only address inspections that are required or imminent, and we had one for a business to get open, so we went ahead and did that one. It was an ALE inspection. So if something comes up, absolutely, we're doing them, but we are trying to wait until the fall with that. So COVID's still with us. Again, I reported out last month, our priority is still with Duck Fires, health and safety of the firefighters in the community. We're continuing to minimize exposure with the duty crews only. The volunteers are off-duty firefighters, our emergency response. They socially distance if we need to stage at the fire department, and then we do what we can on scene as far as socially distancing. We will slowly start to do volunteer standby, but we'll do that in small amounts, so we won't have five standby at once, but we will start incorporating some standby. Actually, one came in today for a little while, and we'll start doing that. We will go back to some normal training. We'll train next Tuesday and the following Tuesday, which would be normal. We are doing our Saturday truck checks. We're trying to do that with social distancing and also taking advantage of outside. As far as response, we're continuing to be dispatched to medical calls determined by protocol. So that is determined by the 911 call and by the response protocols with Dare Central. Our response is proper P to all medical calls, face coverings, when we cannot, proper social distance can't be maintained. So if we go to an alarm activation, we will stop, we will maintain that. We won't send as many folks in, and if we can, we'll remove the folks from the house until we can determine the problem. Again, just try to decrease exposure. The Public Safety Building still has restrictions until further notice. Again, we're just trying to decrease the footprint within the building. We've got it pretty dialed down with FedEx and mail and everything. Everyone knows the routine now, we'll come to the door, it hasn't been a problem. People will call ahead, doing the same thing that town's doing here. We're there, we're here, and we've come to you, and usually between the firefighters or Nicole or I, or DC now, we're milling around, so we're able to get to the folks outside. Just a quick thing, we've also modified our t-shirt sales. It's more of a takeout procedure now, because we do have a small footprint for that, and also people can order ahead if they want. So we've had to modify that piece as well, but it seems to be working well. I update you, again, COVID kind of put us on a delayed project, just because of the vendor we use, but I was tasked with putting reflective markings on the command vehicles. So one of our goals was to make sure we were consistent, again, with what we already have. So our utility vehicles on the left, that's an example, the brush truck, has that duck fire across the back. And our newest engine, Engine 111, has the stripe down the side, so to be consistent with the vehicles, we wanted to do that. Also, we wanted to, they're black vehicles. The previous police chief had a marked vehicle that had the ghosting, so we went with the ghosting as well. And so I give you an example of, so this is my vehicle, it's the 2015 Chevy Tahoe, so we have the striping down the side, the duck fire on the back. Okay? And it's the same on the other side. And then, to give you an idea, with lights on at night, very hard to see, which is a good thing, that means it's hard to see because of the lights, just trying to give you an idea. So the lights will kind of mask that a little, so the reflective's very seen. With the lights on, you still see it, but the lights actually take over what you will see. This is the DC's vehicle, we did exactly the same thing. So we went to the vendor and said, "Do the exact same thing to both vehicles." So he's got the striping down the side and also on the back. So I guess there was some question about the ghosting, because in the sunlight, it is difficult to tell. So I put a couple examples here. So the vehicle on the left is a ghosted vehicle from Lower Curry Tuck. At night, that lights up, but that's what it looks like in the day. Think about Curry Tuck, it's five lanes of traffic, they've got 158, it's busy, they went with that. At night, that thing lights up, and I couldn't get a night picture. This is my vehicle in the day. As you can see, the striping is hard to see, but I have a short video. So this is very bright sunlight, this is us taking a quick video, you can see them in the reflection there, but that is all the lighting. If you look at my vehicle, there's lighting, low, high, on the sides, all the way around the vehicle. You can still see duck fire, and you come around, and same thing on the side as well. And we, I didn't even have the lights on with this, it's even brighter in the front. But I did want you to see that you can see the reflective, the lights are on, and this is daylight, if there was some confusion there. Also, last night, really important, so as you all know, we have the Duck Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated is its own entity that is then basically contracted with the town to provide fire protection services. So every year, we have to have our annual meeting, that was last night. I've been talking with Chris about this and talking with the board about it, and if you look at how we incorporated in July of 1982, and you look at 2020, we operate a little differently. Budgeting and how we get revenues and how we use revenues is really done between the town manager now, and not so much a purchasing agent and the treasurer from within the department. So we looked at the, we reviewed the Articles of Incorporation, we looked at our bylaws, and wanted to align with current administrative procedures and operations. So last night, we voted, the membership voted, to amend the Articles back to the original, which had three board members. So right now, we have five. We're going back to three because of how we operate. The majority of the finances really falls on the town manager and the chief and the admin, as far as some of the secretarial work, if you will, that's under the incorporation. And with our changing membership as a combination department, the membership agreed that this would be a better model going forward. So we will do that paperwork. We approved it last night, I need to send it off to the Secretary of State, or Secretary of State, the NC State, and then in about 30 to 60 days, we'll go ahead and do a new election. It still will be staggered, so we'll have one position up, that'll be in the next 30, 60 days, and two the following year, and it'll alternate every two years. So we'll have a chair, vice chair, secretary slash treasurer. So I know we're going to have a conversation coming up here shortly, and I just wanted to make sure that a couple things didn't get muddied with the discussion regarding an ambulance. I want to make sure that people listening, the community, and you all understand what Duck Fire does and what Duck Fire does not do. So in 1994, Duck recognized the need for first responders, and that's when Rescue 11 started. We were one of the first fire departments to get an AED, and we had the first AED save in Dare County. So the firefighters and all volunteer at that point recognized the need to do something and formed Rescue 11. Not all fire departments in Dare County provide that service. So some departments, Hatteras Island has a separate entity that does that, Roanoke Island's another example, they don't run first response unless it's, they might run it for a CPR call. So now you fast-forward to 2020, and I just want everyone to be clear, so this doesn't get muddied with the other conversation, is what our capabilities are with your firefighters. All of our firefighters are EMTs. They have the same North Carolina certification as Dare County EMS EMTs. Their skill sets to assess and initiate care is the same as Dare County EMS. We work in collaboration with them, and we work at the basic life safety level, BLS. Police and fire carry AEDs. Like I've said before, we have a ton of AEDs in town, cardiac arrests in town. For us, it's probably initiated by police, fire, or occasionally a lifeguard. EMTs can put in airways for cardiac arrests. So we can do those initial steps around those calls. Also, first aid, bandaging, hemorrhaging, all that other stuff. So I just want to be clear that the money we're So I just want to be clear that the money we're paying for firefighters and our EMTs provide this level of service. So when we get to the other discussion, I just don't want that piece muddied, if you will. And at this point, I'll take questions. I'll end with one thing, and I use the American flag purposely. Difficult time right now. Everything's heightened. Our country is hurting and trying to heal, and we're going through a lot, and so just, you know, it's tough on public safety, too. So thank you for your support. And I'll take any questions.
So Donna, your firemen have the same EMT level as the EMS people?
Basic EMT, not paramedic.
So advanced life saving, some of Dare County EMS offers is different. It's a higher level.
The, and again, I'll be careful tonight with any questions you have for me. I'm not Chief Collins, but the majority of the ambulances probably have a basic EMT and a paramedic assigned to the transport unit.
Correct. That being said, you put up here that your people, the EMTs, can intubate. Is that right?
It's not. Intubation's called a King Airway, and it's also the, yeah, but for the purposes, not to confuse anyone out there.
The point is, I thought that you informed Patty Bossert and Karen Blows that while your people have the capability to do that, it's not offered. Can you explain what that means?
We carry them. I don't know why it's not offered. We do it all the time.
So you intubate people on a regular basis?
Yes, with King Airways.
I'm sorry, say again?
Yes, with the King Airway. It's not, just be careful, yes, it is a mechanism. It's an airway. It is not intubation where you use.
So what you're talking about is the mask when you're giving somebody CPR?
No, and I'd be glad in the next meeting to show you. We actually put a tube down and.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Say again?
Yeah, next time you come in, can you bring that?
Absolutely. Yeah, we have a whole airway head. We can do a whole demonstration.
Any other questions for Chief?
Okay, thank you. It's good to see you all.
Thanks, Chief.
All right. So moving along to what's sure to be a lively discussion. At first, I want to say that, you know, I want to apologize to the council. Sometimes in my line of work, I can be working on something that is, that I think is a staff level item, and council will correct me on that, and that's just the nature of the business in that. I feel that I should have kept council more aware. I wasn't, I didn't intentionally keep council out of the loop on the discussions we were having at a staff level and with Patty and with some others about piloting an ambulance in Duck during the summer months, during heavy traffic periods, but I neglected to keep everyone in the loop, and I apologize for that. And this is my attempt to get everyone back in the loop of what I was trying to do. As you can see from the, from my statement in the summary of information, earlier this year, I was contacted by Dare County to say that there had been some inquiries about staging an ambulance in Duck by one of our citizens, Rob's partner, Patty Bossert. And I initiated with, and had Donna join me for some meetings to get some clarification about what the goals were, to try to provide some, make sure that there was some education on the type of things that our EMTs are capable of doing. Also had a meeting with the county, in which the county made it clear that they really didn't have any near-term plan to put an ambulance permanently in, at the Duck Fire Department. There was, during those discussions, there was, with both parties, but separately, the whole idea of the time of an ambulance to get from southern shores, where there are two stations typically, but they move south frequently, and so there might only be one at the, or maybe even not one, at the Dogwood Station. And in that, the traffic, the heavy traffic can slow, you know, can slow response times. And it seemed to me that that was a, that that was a good thing to explore in terms of staging something closer to Duck if possible. The county agreed that they would be willing at some level. They were a bit non-committal on what that level would be, but they did commit to looking at piloting in the summer, summer months when it was busy, on busy days, an ambulance to the extent they could. I looked to take them up on that offer. We had to work our way through COVID. Most recently, most recently, we had a discussion where they once again said that they were ready to, where the county said they were ready to put an ambulance in place, again, occasionally, as a pilot to kind of test it. And they were ready when we were ready. As Donna mentioned, there were concerns with COVID about getting it, starting that process, and I wanted to give it a couple more weeks to make sure that the folks that were permanently housed at the fire department and me personally, that I was comfortable, but that I felt that we could seek to try to start that pilot sometime in mid, sometime around mid-June. It was at that point that I was, that Councilor Kavines and I had a discussion, the results of which are why we're talking about this in this venue right now. So that's the background. There's a lot to unpack there. And I just throw the initial items and kind of the bare bones as a starting point. Glad to speak about this at any level of detail you want, to follow up at any detail you want. My personal opinion is that if the county's willing to pilot something, that it's worth exploring at some level. But with that said, you know, there certainly is a process that should be followed, and this is part of that process. So I will finish my comments at this point. And we have a.
No, not during discussion.
After, at the end, yeah.
You can put them in for the public comment after.
So Chris, thank you. This is Nancy Kavines. Thank you for putting this on the agenda tonight. Everyone was copied on an email communication over the weekend, Sunday night, I believe. And you all got my response, because I replied to everybody when I read a letter from a stakeholder in town, that at least my interpretation of that email was that they were under the impression that a pilot program was about to start, a pilot program that we, that I knew nothing about, and couldn't remember if there had been any discussion about it. So let me say at the outset, Chris and I had a conversation on Monday. My concern at the outset is not about the ambulance. My concern is about process. So I think that we have had, that Duck stands as a model of good government, and that we have had a very well-established process when we look at anything that happens in the town. Doesn't matter what it is. We hear stakeholder comments all the time. Sometimes we act on them, sometimes we don't. When they rise to a level of need, we generally do act on it, and that usually involves bringing in experts, entities, agencies, you know, people that know a lot more about the issue than we do. We look at data. We look at stats. We look at financial implications. And even when we're not required to, we often ask for community input. And then from all of that, we usually propose a solution. And so in the case of an ambulance, the proposed solution may very well, in fact, be a pilot program, but I personally feel like we've skipped over all those steps. I understand that there's one or two people in town that have a perception about something, but as far as I'm aware, we have never been approached by Dare County or by our fire department, for that matter, saying, "We have a service delivery deficiency," or something of that nature, where we would be like, "Well, eeks, maybe we better look into it." I don't, you know, sense that if the council thinks that it's worth discussing, then I think where we start is how we've started with everything else, where we talk to agency stakeholders, community stakeholders, and we get a sense of what is the best thing to do. Fire Department, Police Department, Dare County EMS, Currituck County EMS, you know, the residents of southern shores are going to be impacted by this. The residents of Kitty Hawk are going to be impacted by it. We have a lot of stakeholders in the town that have lots of opinions about public safety vehicles, and everybody who was here when we proposed the first build-out of the town hall can probably remember some of the very strong feelings that we had from people in the community about the police being at town hall. So while I appreciate, you know, people having varying perspectives, I feel like we have just leapfrogged over all of it. And, you know, if it's something that is worth examining, you know, put it on the agenda for the retreat, or put it on the agenda, you know, at a council meeting. But, you know, as I talked to Chris about it, I think we've had a good process about demonstration projects and pilots and initiatives that we've done for many, many, many years. I'm proud to say that I've been part of all of that, and I just don't want to see us jettison that good governance now for something that might be worthwhile, but I think that the council needs to take the responsibility to vet it, and so that we can answer to a stakeholder that says, "Why is there an ambulance at Duck Fire?", that we can give them a reasonable Thank you.
So I was expecting there to be more discussion.
Oh, no, there'll be more discussion.
We can have some discussion.
I'm not sure, again, my, to the extent that I am to blame for process errors, I take it on the chin, you know, and I don't think, you know, I don't think that's the issue. There are several issues here. One of them is, one of them is the pilot project, which is, you know, which is something that, again, the county, all indications are the county's willing to do that. I don't, they have not committed to, you know, they have not committed to anything except doing a pilot project. They haven't given any details on, I don't think the expectation for them is that, you know, they're going to have something staged here, you know, all summer during the weekends. We're trying to get as much as we can out of the county. We also know that, you know, long-term, this item has been lumped in with discussions of the public safety building. That's an appropriate place for those discussions to be. I think that, I think that if the county has any desire to put an ambulance at any time in Duck, that, you know, that that is the opportunity to do that, that opportunity is not past, it's still here, but it's not something that, it's going to have to happen with the public safety building. It's not going to, it's not going to happen with a new public safety building. It's not going to happen before that. The current public safety building, unless the, unless the, unless the county is willing to compromise to an extent that I'm not sure that they're willing to compromise to, the chances of them putting an ambulance full-time at the current public safety building are, it's not going to happen. That doesn't negate our ability to see what happens with some kind of pilot project. If the county decides that they don't want to put an ambulance in Duck, then the argument needs to be with the county, unless, unless anyone here is ready to purchase an ambulance, start our own paramedics, and that's certainly something that the council could decide to do if you wanted to do that. But I don't think that, I don't think that that's something that is a reasonable expectation right now when, with competing costs that we already have on our table, and with frankly, an idea that somehow there's inadequate service. I think that's really the point where more education needs to be, we need to have more education on that, and we need to have a discussion about, you know, what those services are. Our firefighter EMTs provide a high level of service that's part of that continuity of care. No, it's not an ambulance. But there is someone who can save your life and can do things that will, that will make an ambulance, any delay on an ambulance virtually a moot point. There are always scenarios where, that someone could come up with where that would not happen, but, you know, I feel very comfortable about the level of service. It's not an ambulance, and if Dare County wanted to come in and said they wanted to put an ambulance and we could plan for it, I don't know that anyone, any one of you, nor I, would say no to that. But they haven't committed to that level. All we've had been able to get them commit to is working on a pilot project. And that's what I was trying to facilitate, because frankly, I didn't think it would be an issue that would garner so much, so much concern.
Chris, I'll make a few comments here, and I agree with what Nancy said about process from a standpoint of, all of a sudden, it's kind of dropped on council. But, and I think anybody at this table, you know, any council member would say, "Yeah, having an ambulance in Duck would probably be a great idea, and probably something we should strive with, you know, strive for over the future." But at the same time, you know, there's a real void in information, and I think we're all sitting up here not knowing, and I'm an organized person, I like plans, but there's a real void with respect to information. And, you know, I know that the county's been back and forth on this over the last three or four years. Yes, we'll do it, no, we won't do it. But even a pilot program, is it going to be Saturday and Sunday? Is it going to be, you know, Mondays and Fridays? What are they going to do? How long is it going to stay in town? Is it going to be here all day long? Is it going to be here during the evening? If in fact, you know, how often are they going to have to pull it south, you know, versus leaving it in Duck? You know, and I think Nancy makes a good point. There's a lot of people involved here, because we're not the only town served by that station. And I think doing a pilot's probably a great idea, but somehow, rather than saying, you know, "We're ready to do it whenever you are," I think we need a little better explanation and detail and understanding what's involved and what's going to be the commitment by our staff and you, yourself, and the fire chief and police chief. And, you know, we do have limited capability in our fire station, so are they going to have to be housed in the parking lot while they're here? Just a lot of questions, I think. Just a lot of questions, I think, that we just don't know answers to. I mean, I would see okay with going forward with a pilot, but I really think that somehow, and I think it's got to be done by the town, the county, not by stakeholders. I mean, I really think you and Donna, you've really got to somehow work this out with the county manager and the EMS chief. Because, you know, I think there's just a void, as I said earlier, a void of information. And I think there's a lot of questions out there. And I don't, I certainly don't feel comfortable, although I think a pilot's a good idea, and if they're willing to do that, what strings are attached to that? And is there going to be a cost to us somehow? I mean, do they have available personnel, the staff, two locations? Do they overlap? I have no idea. I have no idea how they operate and how they move the ambulances around. So, as I say, I think we probably would also, you know, more than likely, probably support a pilot and support an ambulance over time in Duck. But I think right now, there's a real void of what the plan is. And, you know, that's kind of my opinion.
Could I just add to this conversation? I think that the point that you make, Nancy, about not being aware, I would agree with that. And I thank you, Chris, for pointing it out, that you should have, you know, could have been bringing us into the conversation. On that point, however, I would like to just say that there are many times that the council relies on the expertise of our public safety officials, our professionals, in all walks of their expertise, whether it be Joe on something, or Christian, obviously, our fire and police chiefs. I feel like we do rely on their expertise, and there is a lot that's handled with the professional staff members across county and, you know, disciplines and everywhere. I mean, so we really do, you know, rely on their connectivity, they're doing, they're doing the work, they're getting into the details. I don't, I do want to step back real quick, and I won't get into it for too long, but I've been around a long time in this town prior to incorporation, and certainly used to rely on only county services, back when we just had a sheriff department, and you could wait, you know, a long, long time to, even if you had an accident or something. And so, I'm very accustomed to the county services, that the ambulance, because that's how it always was. When we became a town, we started enhancing our local services in the town, and it was great. I mean, we have great services, no, let's just face it. You look at the recycling, look at our trash, our efficiencies, we are a model. Part of that growth has included the need for going from a volunteer fire department to a paid fire department. And that was a lot of consternation to add staff, whether it be police or fire. But way back when, when we were in the little tiny town building, when we added some firefighters, we had a lot of, a lot of talk about it. And one of the things that made it very easy for me to add to that, and it seems a moot point now, but it was critical, was the fact that our firefighters could be EMTs. To me, that was a no-brainer, because yes, our population is aging, and we need, and look at the calls, they're 50% EMT calls. I mean, I'm glad we don't have a ton of fires, don't get me wrong, but we need EMTs, and we need quick, efficient reaction. And honestly, I feel like since we've grown, we've always had that. I don't see a deficiency. So I just wanted to make that clear, that I don't think, and I, and I'm excited for the conversation to get more public, because regardless of how it all plays out, it'll really shine a light on how the ambulances work. I mean, I kind of get it, because I've lived here a really long time, there's a certain number of them, we got a helicopter, and it's all county or run, and they kind of shift, much like the fire trucks shift, depending on where the needs are. So there's probably a ton of data out there as to how many times even the Dogwood ambulance has to go. Do we all have, we don't know this off the top of our head, but we can get this data. It's not, it's not going to be a problem. That said, I'd like to go back to the idea that I would rely on someone like the town manager in conjunction with our chiefs, and our, working in conjunction with the Dare County manager and their head of the ambulance, Collins, and, you know, just get some ideas together. I'm not concerned about a pilot program. I think it could be fairly straightforward. It could, it's going to be what it is, you know, it's going to be resource-based, it's going to be parking up there, and kind of seeing how it goes, right? I mean, that's, it's going to, how many times did we deploy and to have to leave through town? And how hard was that to get out of, out of the fire station to get down into Southern Shores? And how many days a week was the Duck, was the ambulance even available to us to come up from Dogwood, to be in a more northern location? So I think it's just going to be interesting data. I don't think it's going to change a lot of what's happening, other than just give us a little data. So I'm not that concerned about the details, to be honest with you. It's parking it up in our area, and maybe some arrangement with how that happens. So, but I'm not, I'm not in it deeply, that's just my, over my top-level view. And so I don't think it's a big deal to have the ambulance come up here and get some data, no promises, but kind of see how, what's going. And I don't disagree at all with the town manager that there's no way you can have an ambulance, like, live here unless we get the new Public Safety Building. So, that's all I got.
Just a comment on the details, Monica, and I don't think, normally the way we process is, Chris brings a project forward, here's who I'm working with, here's what we're going to do, and then we either, you know, have consensus, or we disagree, or add suggestions. I don't think we're telling them how to do it, but I think we're looking for them to come back and tell us how it's going to happen. And I think you and I probably agree on that.
That's my same thoughts. I just want to know how everything's going to work. I'd really like to see the number of calls that are north, in the north end, versus that come in just into the south end of town, weekends and weekdays.
So, I understand the concern about process. This is kind of a no-brainer. We have an aging population here that lives here all year round, and we have a large population during the summer months. The basic lifesaving qualifications of both the fire and police officers that are working here cannot compete with a paramedic that would be on, one of the two people on any ambulance that we get. That being said, it's not a problem until it is a problem. And the first time that something is beyond the capability of basic lifesaving skills, that person may have to wait 25 or 30 minutes for an ambulance with a paramedic on them, on there, to take care of them, and then get them moving to the hospital. Now, I don't want to stand on process when somebody dies because we were talking about a discussion that should have happened that didn't happen. Now, why, why we didn't all know about this, certainly you can guess why I know about it. It's not, it's not a mystery. We know that more than 50% of our fire department's calls are health-related calls, they're medical calls. That's been borne out in all the statistics that get presented here at every meeting. So, what we're talking about now is this pilot program. I don't see that there's any legitimate reason to oppose that, certainly. And if the discussion needs to continue in order to satisfy everybody's need for data and/or better understanding of what is available and what can be done while that pilot program is ongoing, I think it's fine, let's do that. But we can't get in the way of saving people's lives. That's, that's the bottom line of the whole thing.
With due respect, Rob, I've been on the fire department for 21 years, and I can honestly say, we have never had to wait for 30 minutes for an ambulance to join us on any kind of Rescue 11 medical call, so...
As I said, it's not a problem until it is. And now, the way things, the way that the population is growing here, I mean, we can see now, especially during this COVID business, because there are no kids in schools, we're already, I think, at sort of peak capacity, right? Everybody's here with their kids because they don't have to take them to school, so they're early, and they're going to stay. So, the traffic and the congestion is only going to get worse. And so, I understand what you're telling me about your experiences, but this, times are changing, and we have to change with them. As a result, and correct me, Donna, if I'm wrong about this, correct me, Chief Black, if I'm wrong about this, you, your guys, you need to have three people on a truck before that truck leaves the house, is that correct?
Yes.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to participate in this part. Our goal, because remember, we are here for fire protection, that is our goal. We are not ALS transport. The medical piece is a value-added determination that you all supported and suggested to help fill that service gap of an ambulance being in Southern Shores. So that's one part. The second part, yes, our combination department's changing. We're seeing it, I see it with COVID, I see it with COVID, and we have no bench. So right now, we have no bench with the makeup of our department. What I want to be able to do 24/7 is have the pager go off, and we be able to respond with the engine, so that, is it a medical call, or is it a structure fire, or is it a car accident? However, we're in the business of public safety, and at any moment, the call could be an ALS call, cardiac arrest, an extrication call, give you an example, we had an extrication in December, we only had two on, we did not wait for a third, we rolled, because that was a critical call. So to your point, we're going to leave, I want three there, so we're leaving with three, no matter what kind of call it is. If it's an ALS emergency and we have to split, we do it all the time. We're going to have multiple calls, and DC or I are going to probably take the second call, because we're all EMTs. But yes, the goal is for the three to get out the door. On a bad rip current day, we may be splitting that. We may have two on the engine and one something else, because we may have multiple calls, which is also why we'd like three, to be able to mitigate that. Can I speak to this real quick, and then I'll answer any questions you have? Duck Fire has no problem with having an ambulance be stationed in the town of Duck. That's not a problem for us, that's not a threat to us, nothing. My only concern as your fire chief is that I will fail you, because we don't have the space at the Public Safety Building to do it right. That's the only thing, right now, during COVID especially. If you've been to our building, we have one room, it's upstairs, it's the training room, living room, kitchen, only place for anyone, including the police, to gather to do any of that stuff. So Merrick is not even using the facility. He has found a house that he's using if they need to gather, and he's been here for training because of COVID. So the first problem of why we're delaying right now is the volunteers aren't even going in the building, because we're trying to limit to the staff on duty from exposure. So please don't let that muddy the water, that Duck doesn't want an ambulance at the Public Safety Building. But please understand the limitations to it. My concern with the conversation is that data is clear and expectation is clear. And to make that clear, we need Chief Collins in the room. I want her to explain how, Monica, you hit it, I just want her to explain to all of us, including the community, because I know, so I'm not, but I'm not her, of how they maneuver. So the expectation, if we bring up the ambulance on Saturday at 10 o'clock, that at 11, it's gone. And you understand why. And I haven't failed you as the chief, because it's not sitting there, and quite frankly, Chief Collins hasn't failed you, because she said she'd do it. We have to understand how Dare County operates, you have to understand how we are that continuity of care for the ambulance, let's look at that. I have no problem piloting. I'm more concerned about accommodating the EMS personnel, and the fire personnel, and the police personnel, and the lifeguard personnel, that we're all comfortable, safe, and feel okay. It's not just putting an entity there, it's mixing people in the middle of all this when it's still unclear how we're dealing with it. So there's a lot of factors, but the first, most important one is we need to understand the facts, the facts of how Dare County EMS runs and operates. And then we can go from there. There's one data point that's running around, one data point that's running around, you have to look at that, and how many times is that one data point a fact? And Chief Collins is great at this stuff, she's got this data, it's a conversation. Bring her in the room, have her bring all her data, and she can answer these questions. Doesn't mean we can't work towards piloting at the same time, but please put her in this room, I will stand beside her to have the conversation. But we're trying to figure all the stuff out by, and no offense, by a citizen concern that took a data point. And let's just get everyone in the room and have the conversation. I'll make it happen. You know, we've got some issues with if they need the ambulance inside during hot days, and how we do that, we'll work through that stuff. An ambulance in Duck to pilot, let's figure it out. The Public Safety Building provides some challenges, that's all. Thank you. Yeah, I'll answer anything you want, Rob, I'm sorry, didn't mean to hijack.
No, that's, I mean, it seems to me like we're all moving in the right direction here. I know you were supposed to have a meeting with Chief Collins back in March, but with all the COVID business, it was adjourned, it was some other time. So let's do it, get together with her, get the information, so that you guys, just like when Joe works on something, you guys work it out.
I would really like...
And you come and give us the information.
I would really like Chief Collins to directly give you the information. And she and I have had that conversation, please, I want you to hear about her agency and her operations from her. Again, I will stand beside her and do my work.
I think that would help the whole public, not just the council. I think that would, that information, it would be great. We've never had her come.
Yeah.
Or anybody come from the ambulance group, and it's a great idea. I think the whole town would benefit from that, not just the council.
And I'm going to stand beside Chris on this, because I didn't tell my board and members either. We were trying to figure this out, so let's say, quietly pilot it somehow, if you will, before it got to this point. But it, I'm going to be honest with you, it got cumbersome, I've been carrying it around the last couple of weeks, it's been very stressful, because I don't want to fail it either, right? And I'm concerned now, because we need accurate information, clear expectation of what that's going to look like, and then boom, let's go, we can try that.
But I don't, I don't know, you keep saying you don't want to fail, Chief, but I don't get that.
Yeah, because I'm worried about the logistics, the logistics of the building, and what I think the county's going to require, and what that's going to mean with possibly displacing our equipment. You know, there's just pieces to that. It's nothing we can't figure out and work out, but it's, we kind of put the cart before the horse. And I'm still concerned about the expectation piece, because it's not, it's not my responsibility just because we agree next Saturday, or three Saturdays, when COVID has calmed down, to put an ambulance there, and it's gone two minutes later. I didn't kick him out, I got, I want everyone to be clear about the expectation of the pilot program. Okay?
Just a couple of comments. First of all, back to your comment, Rob, about aging population and expanding summertime, that the county's got that problem. I mean, the aging property, population down in Dare County in total, and the population in Dare County in the summertime swells. So it's not just that, that problem in Duck, yeah, we have the two-lane road, but there's other two-lane roads they got to get down to. So, you know, that's not unique to us when it comes summertime, and all of a sudden, you've got 300-some thousand people down here on the island. But the second thing, I think we're confusing a short-term pilot with a long-term plan.
Sure.
I think the long-term plan really has to be thought out with respect to, and working with the county, and what capability can they give us. The short term is, let's put together something between the county and the town with respect to a short-term pilot, you know, maybe we both have something to prove in that regard.
I'll give you an example.
Maybe it's feasible, maybe it's not, but I mean, I mean, I think, I'd rather not confuse the long-term, which is, you know, Public Safety Building and full-time ambulance and all that type of thing, with a short-term pilot, which is going to perhaps, you know, solve some short-term problems, you know, in the busy time of the summer.
Well, and I think that's where the expectation and data piece is important, because I tell you right now, we're all thinking we need it on Saturday and Sundays. Her data does not support Sunday. Our data doesn't support Sunday. Our data doesn't totally support Saturday, but I'm not ALS transport. So that's why I think it's important to get some data in front of you while we still work through piloting, but get it to you soon, so you understand what that's going to look like, even perhaps the first Saturday. And I appreciate you letting me speak to this, because I want to make sure you all have the correct expectation of what that will look like. Sundays is not today.
And the helicopter, too, the helicopter, too, is kind of, will be interesting.
Yeah, so, and just for comfort for everyone listening and for the room, if we have a bad ALS call, we did this with the extrication, the Pine Island Fire Department and EMS station is across from Hampton Inn, it's four miles from Sanderling Inn. It is closer than Southern Shores. We have called, in my career, I have called Currituck County multiple times... We have called, in my career, I have called Creighton County multiple times if there is a delay for an ambulance with an urgent call. We could probably figure out when, it would take me a while. But we do not hesitate to call North Mutual Aid for help if it's urgent and they are out of, out of range because of call volume. It happens. But don't, we're, when you look at, you got one four miles there and rough and dirty from here, four miles there. I think there's other ways we can also make citizens feel comfortable about coverage with an ALS transport unit.
I mean, I think the four or five of you should get together, county and town, and put together the pilot, keep us informed with respect to what you're going to do.
With the presentation-
And I think then we have a longer-term discussion, whether that's a working session or whether that's the retreat where we get the county in and they have their discussion with EMS and what are their plans? I mean, I mean, do they really have plans? I mean, I think that's a fair assessment. We're paying for them, so.
So with that, can we have her, can we see if the county will have Chief Collins come in and present to you how they operate while we figure out the pilot piece?
I mean, there's no harm in doing that. I don't know if she'll do that, but.
The suggestion I would have is let me get up with, let me get up with the county manager, you know, won't be in a vacuum, will be with Donna and with Jenny, and let's see if over the next week, we have two work sessions coming up. I think we can put something together that, you know, that would answer sort of the immediate questions of the whats. And, you know, and during that process, you know, during that process, if, you know, if they want to commit to coming in and helping us talk about that process and what to expect with a pilot project and things of that nature, I think that's a, I think that's a good opportunity and I think it's good to take them up on that. Yes, the future of an ambulance stationed in Duck is worthy of, permanently is worthy of discussion, but that's, I mean, that is a longer-term thing that, you know, that I think, you know, has an opportunity to evolve as we, as we, you know, as we go forward closer to the Public Safety Building. There are going to be key items where if the county wants to put a, put an ambulance in Duck where they're, they're going to have to, you know, make that commitment and they're going to be afforded that opportunity to make that, make that commitment if they wish to.
And maybe the pilot helps them get their data a little bit too. I don't know.
Also, from some letters we received from stakeholders in the community, a lot of them would be interested in hearing what the county says because I don't think that a lot of them know what the whole deal is with the ambulance service in the county.
I would agree.
Yeah, I mean, my perspective is that the, you know, the emails that we have received, they're not operating with, you know, a full understanding of what the expectation is or what, or what the point of it is. I mean, I think if you ask anybody, everyone would say, sure, I'll have an ambulance. But my point is it's, this is not really about the ambulance. This is about, we're making a decision to pilot something based on something. We don't really know what we're looking at, so we can't really make a determination of whether it's a success or a failure until we have the information from the experts that are telling us this, then this, then this. And maybe our solution is to pilot it so that we can say, yeah, that was an improvement or no, that brought up all sorts of unintended consequences, just the way we've done every single other thing in the town. I mean, we've had stakeholders that have said, I want a crosswalk at Makeup Street. Well, yes, everybody would love a crosswalk at every intersection, but DOT has already told us, you can't have, you can't have that many crosswalks in town for, you know, safety reasons and for other reasons. I want the experts in the room that are going to be able to give us the proper assessment of why staging an ambulance at Duck Fire might be the solution to a problem. And it sounds like some people are under the impression that it's a response problem, you know, a timing or, you know, emergency response problem, but we haven't heard that from Dare County. They have not come to us and said, we can't get to you guys, we have a problem. I mean, if they have, please correct me, but I mean, I've served on this town council for a long time and we've never gotten a plea from Dare County or Dare County EMS saying, "Town of Duck, we're in trouble. Please help us figure out a solution." That's all I'm saying is, we need, if we're going to pilot something, let's have a goal for it and let's let it be based on facts from the people who are the service delivery for ALS.
So Chris, I think it's back to you and Donna to move forward with the county and maybe within two weeks when we meet, you know, we'll have a plan. It's probably not implementable during Phase Two of COVID-19 anyhow, so I'm sure it wouldn't even be implemented until sometime in July. I don't know. I mean, with all the restrictions you got now, how could you really pilot it?
The COVID piece is, will be the biggest one right now. And there's some logistics pieces and Chris and I will work through that with the county.
Is that okay with council, that approach?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you for letting me provide-
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. All right. You have the preliminary financial report. I left off the Y for some reason on the, on the, on the report. So it's the preliminary financial report for the month of May. We don't have the occupancy tax numbers. I wouldn't get too excited because, well, we did open up, but so there'll be some, some, some money there. But the May is usually the April and we were closed most of April, so that zero is probably pretty close to what we're going to get for occupancy tax for, for the month. So even with that, you know, revenues are still up. I still feel very satisfied with where we're at. On the expenditure side, most of the big items are done. You know, I feel real good about where, where the budget is at the end of the year. The budget amendments that you did this year were, I mean, this month were largely grant associated and we're covering other items such as solid waste, which is some kind of, sometimes a difficult one to prognosticate during budget time. So you'll have another budget amendment coming forward and I expect that by the end of the year, you know, we'll, we'll be very close to meeting the goals I spoke about at the, at the budget presentation. So if there are any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. If not, you will, once we get occupancy tax, you'll get a revised non-preliminary report and in your, in your email.
Any questions? Thank you, Chris. Going into item number nine, the mayor's agenda, I have a few items that go over here. First of all, our control group meetings finally ended on May 22nd and we met 41 times. So that's obviously going to be a record for a long time. I'm sure of that. To an extent, I kind of missed the interaction with some of the other mayors though because it was kind of good to catch up and find out what was going on in their towns. On May 28th, I attended the League of Municipalities Board Meeting and Annual Meeting, first time it was ever done remotely and virtual. And they had over 300 attendees on there. And impacting me, I was re-elected to the Board of Directors for District One for the next two years. So I'll look forward to serving with them. Along the same lines, and the chief mentioned this earlier, and I did send a copy to the council, I did sign on to a letter, the North Carolina Statement on the Murder of George Floyd. It was initially started by the mayor of Durham and I think it ended up with 82 mayors across the state signing on. You know, the bottom line was, you know, protest but don't riot and obviously address the issues that came out of Minneapolis. And I think that, you know, what we see happening now is a travesty and hopefully we'll get back to normal on that situation. I'm also providing leadership for the league, addressing Representative Murphy in the 3rd Congressional District. I'm working with Mayor Hardy out of, Kinston, Merrick Connolly out of Greenville. And we're looking to get the support from the 64 mayors in that congressional district so that Representative Murphy can go forward. The key issue is basically funding of revenue shortfalls for the towns and cities in North Carolina. And although we're going to probably have a shortfall, some of these towns are really going to experience some significant shortfalls. And the First CARES Act, the money went to the counties and it was only basically for COVID-19 expenses, no revenue relief. And I think that, I don't know if we'll be successful or not. I know there's a split in Washington with respect to doing this, but it's an effort to get Murphy on board. In fact, tomorrow, he's actually having a webinar for an hour for cities and towns to call in to him to see what the latest is in Washington. And so it's, we've actually got a lot of the mayors already to sign on. Getting their attention is difficult during these times. Some of them are, are having the issues in their cities right now with, you know, the protests and the riots and others are just having issues with COVID. So that's an effort that we have going on now with the league. And with that, that's all I have. And with that, we'll go on to item number 10, council members' agenda. I'll start with Mayor Portem, Monica Thibodeau.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that I talked about the, about, about the events in the whole country that we're going through and just to say that I, you know, between, between all the social, everything that's going on in our, in our society, I really am hoping that we can all get, learn something from what's happening and take it to heart and all take, you know, just take moments to reflect on, on, on everything that's happening. I think everything is exacerbated by the COVID pandemic, of course, and, and concerns that, the financial concerns and everything that, and the uncertainties that everybody in the country is going through. So I think it's a really tough time for our country. I feel very fortunate that our town is in, in good financial shape. And I also, I'm really hopeful that our local businesses can, can cope with, with all of this that's happened financially for them. The only other thing I would like to say is that I think for our newer town council members, it might be helpful, Mayor, to go over, you know, ahead of time how we might go over the budget if you had a chance to just maybe talk about that before we leave tonight. Just, you know, what we do when we, when we, how we, you know, what we're looking for in those discussions, just to be kind of thinking about it ahead of time. And that's all I have tonight.
Why don't we do that right now, Monica? And you can assist me if you want. We all have the draft budget. Chris has made his presentation and for those of you that will be doing this for the first time, or maybe have never served it before, we will go through the revenues and we will go through the expenses and we'll go through it department by department and make our comments. So become familiar, any issues that you want to bring forth. And then we'll do the same thing with the capital plan with respect to ongoing capital as well as the impact on new capital. And we will actually sit down in the working session and we may need to, to working sessions because sometimes it does take us time to go through it, but we will go through it basically page by page in our review. And I will answer, and I'll answer any questions maybe Sandy or Rob may have because it'll be the first time through for both of you. Or ask Monica if she has anything else to add or Nancy.
No, I think that's good. I also just, I know, I think that's great. That's how we've run it before and it kind of helps to go through it line by line. And, but certainly if there's anything that you, that's, that you have questions on, it doesn't hurt to ask Chris ahead of time just to get some clarity and, or if you have something that you're thinking of, you could, you know, we don't, one-on-one, you can certainly ask a question about a what-if or something just to expedite it or get, you know, kind of grease the wheels a little bit so that it does keep things, you know, so we have time, we have the time we need.
Yeah, I think that's a good point too. And, you know, with the last, when Chris made his presentation, the last council meeting, I asked him about the MSDs and I know he's put together some additional scenarios for us to look at, which will be good because certainly that's one of the big issues that we're going to face going into next year. Nancy, anything you want to add to that, going through it as many times as you have?
No, nothing about budget? No, no.
Chris, anything you want to add to that discussion?
No, I just look forward to going through it line by line.
Thank you, Monica. Councilmember Rob Mooney?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Councilmember Sandy Whitman?
It'd just be different. Instead of sitting in the audience, I'll be sitting up front.
Yeah. You've sat through a lot of it, haven't you, Sandy?
It's true. You have sat through a lot of budgets. I don't know how he does that.
No, Monica, thank you for your, your words tonight. So the only thing I'll add to that is I just, I want to say a special thanks to our police department and our fire department and their families. Because, you know, over the last couple of months with COVID and now with everything else, all the rioting and the social unrest that hasn't really hit here, but, you know, I'm not going to delude myself into thinking that it doesn't because we do provide mutual aid. People who are on the front line of, you know, of this, their families take it really hard to and are put at risk and have sleepless nights and concerns. And so thank you to the volunteers I serve with. Thank you to the career staff that is excellent and thank you to our police department for serving with integrity and compassion.
Thank you, Nancy. Christian, are there any additional public comments?
Yes.
All right. Before we do that, Chris, one question for you. Would you follow up with Drew on priority one for hurricanes? We're into that season now.
The process has started.
Has started, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, Allison, you going to do the public comments? Thank you.
All right. So the first public, well, they all came in this evening, but the first one is from Pam Dutton. Subject is Duck Beach Renourishment Project Homeowner Comments. My name is Pamela Dutton and my husband Steve and I own a home located at 144 Skimmer Way, Duck, North Carolina. I write you because of our concerns over how the beach renourishment is being funded and what I believe are fundamental inequities. I have attached a document that was shared during one of the original beach nourishment updates and from which I have pulled the following information. I believe we are located in Section D10 on the maps. The following is our interpretation of what we believe to be the facts relative to D10. D10 had a zero risk factor in the overall beach risk pool. D15 and D16 had the highest risk factor of six. Hence, I believe we were not at risk of losing our beach and it was, it is at least worth asking about. The town manager explained to me that the reason oceanfront homeowners are taxed more is because of the risk to their property. Again, those of us owning in D10 were deemed to have a zero risk to our property. D10 had a 51.2 recommended fill design compared to D17 with a 155.4 recommended fill design. D17 required three times as much fill than our Section D10 and we paid the same MSD tax rate. D10 shoreline changed a positive 1.1 between 1996 and 2012 compared to the D16 shoreline of negative 8.4. Hence, this calls into question the validity of including us in the project. We respectfully request the following be taken into consideration. Remove D10 from the renourishment project. Increase the town participation from 6% to cover the cost of removing D10. Increase duck taxes for all to cover the recurring problem in the affected areas in town. Consider the more equitable approach both Kitty Hawk and Kill Devil Hills did, not use MSDs to fund their beach nourishment, rather the entire town paid via an increased tax rate. We are further concerned that in the renourishment budget, MSD- We are further concerned that in the renourishment budget, MSD A is proposed to be reduced by 55% and MSD B is proposed to be reduced by 14%. A 2021 payment would be unexpected and negatively impact homeowner budgets for 2021 home improvements that have been put on hold based on an anticipated break in MSD taxes in 2021. Thank you for reading my comments, Pam Dutton. Okay. The next public comment comes from Teresa Cullen, 122 Martin Lane. Since personnel is one of the most expensive items in a budget, I request that the council not add any at this time. The CIP is extremely aggressive, the town is not growing, but the expenses and future plans with associated costs certainly are. I am aware of a number of letters sent to the town as early as March 9th concerning the aggressive budget and the CIP. I urge council members to look for those letters, especially if you do not remember seeing them at this time. The next public comment is from Karen Bloes. Isn't this pilot an opportunity to improve the potential response times to distress calls that are currently not in compliance with national standards? This is a chance to explore the question and is a starting point, not a conclusion. The final public comment comes from Patty Bosert. I also posed a question about an ambulance at the candidate forum on October 1st, 2019, and all council members gave favorable responses, particularly, particularly in the busy summer months. I spoke at the council retreat publicly with the fire chief. The EMS chief is the expert and approached the town four years ago offering to station an ambulance. I gave lengthy public comments at April's council meeting regarding the chronology, 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 sorry, chronology of events since October 2019 regarding the ambulance issue. Chris should read the numerous emails he received from the HOAs and concerned citizens. I spoke at the council retreat publicly with the fire chief. The current building has five vehicle bays and can absolutely accommodate an ambulance. EMTs only provide basic life-saving, not advanced life-saving. Firefighters and fire trucks cannot transport patients. Chris Layton can answer those questions raised by Mayor Kingston. I am absolutely flabbergasted at the lack of attention paid to my prior public efforts in bringing this ambulance issue to council. Dare County EMS is willing to work with us on this. I challenge the excuse that there is no room at our current public safety building. We have five vehicle bays and our proposed new building has only four. Why can't we fit the ambulance? Please do not delay this ambulance pilot program. The data shows Duck Fire Department calls are 50% medical. Helicopters cannot fly in all kinds of weather. The parking lot at the fire department is not an authorized heliport landing. It can be dangerous. Do not delay this pilot beyond mid-June. The majority of citizens of Duck want a Dare County ambulance as evidenced by the numerous large HOAs that sent emails in support of the pilot program. The EMS chief offered the ambulance four years ago. And that's all of the public comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Alison.
Is there any other business to come before the council this evening? There being none, we're going to recess the meeting till June 10th at 3:00 PM, and I need a motion in that regard.
Here.
I'm making a motion. Want to state it?
Make the motion to recess to reconvene on June 10th at 3:00 PM here.
Recession is mean to June 10th at 3:00 PM. Sandy Whitman has put a motion on the floor. Any of this further discussion of the motion? There being none, all in favor, we're going to call the roll. Mayor Protemp, Monica Thibodeau?
Aye.
Councilmember Rob Mooney?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandy Whitman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nancy Caviness?
Aye.
Mayor Don Kingston?
Aye.
The meeting is recessed.